Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council meeting for Friday, September 22nd, 2006. We are very pleased to welcome members of the public and our viewers on Channel 35, where we are broadcast live during each of our meetings, which takes place on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays at 10:00 a.m. here in the John Ferraro Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall. We invite folks to give public comment here during General Public Comment or on items that have been agendized for a public comment. If Van Nuys is closer to where you live, you can go to the Van Nuys City Hall, where we meet each first Friday of the month. But you can also testify during our other meetings here in Van Nuys, and we are able to see you here in council chambers. We also are available through a webcast through our city's homepage at www.lacity.org, where there's a wealth of information on the workings of the city council, the city government, Mayor's Office, and other elected officials and departments. You can also call in if you're close to a phone but not near a computer or a television to council phone, which is (213) 621-CITY. And that is available 24 hours a day as well, and we have some archived bits on our website, too. We want to start the meeting and thank the council members that are here on a timely fashion pursuant to council rules, Councilmember Cardenas, Grul, Labange, Rosendahl, Smith, and Zine. We are still awaiting Councilmember Hahn, Councilmember Parks, Councilmember Perry, Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember Weiss, and Councilmember Wesson. But as is our custom, on Fridays, we honor members from the community, events, heroes, and other notable from Los Angeles and that affect Los Angeles here. And we wanted to begin our Friday presentations. And Councilmember Labange, are you ready to be the first one? All right, I'd like to recognize from the 4th Council District, Councilmember Tom Labange to give our first presentation. Again, welcome, everybody, and thank you for being here.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rosendahl, would you and Mr. Smith like to join me here as we honor some of the great Los Angeles City firefighters this morning, who are all of them who are going to be honored this morning. And Chief Pramachari, would you please come forth here as the great fire chief for the Los Angeles City Fire Department? I'm joined by Councilmember Bill Rosendahl, a great veteran of the United States Army, and also with Councilmember Greg Smith, who was with the United States Air Force. He saw No Time for Sergeants in 1958 and saw that movie. Chief, I want you to open up and say how special this is this morning, who we have gathered here, how important it is in this morning.
I think we all recognize that our firefighters take an oath of office when they come in as firefighters, but many of them go well beyond the immediate job as firefighters and serve our country in a very special way. And what you see behind me is our active firefighters that are also active in the military and among them have done many years of service, most recently in Iraq, prior to that in Afghanistan, some doing training in Central America. So a whole host of different services for our country. And oftentimes, it's certainly a commitment to the country, but at disruption to their lives and jobs here at home. And we take great pride in presenting them to you today for recognition for the dual purpose, what they do here in the city as firefighters, but what they do for our country in representing the commitment to the country abroad. So we're very pleased to be here and express my appreciation to you as a council and really providing us the opportunity to recognize these individuals.
Thank you very much, Chief Pramachari. Give the fire chief a big hand for leading this great city fire department. Someone who's leading the 11th District, but also was a veteran of the United States Army, Bill Rosendahl.
Thank you, Tom, and thanks for organizing this. This reminds me of Katrina. And when the firemen came back from the tragedy there, I heard stories of where they saved lives and they saved people. That was one example where our firefighters went to an area in this great nation and served the people by allowing and participating in also the Army, in the Air Force, in the Marines, in the Coast Guard, in the Navy, in all of the other aspects of our great nation, going to Iraq, going to Afghanistan, putting their life on the line. We honor them for putting their life on the line for this great nation. We thank them for participating in Katrina and the hurricanes, participating now in defending the nation in its foreign policy. It's an honor to stand tall as a veteran with my colleagues who are out there serving our great country. Congratulations.
Now I'm going to call on Councilmember Greg Smith, United States Air Force.
Well, thank you. It's no secret I have a great love for the fire department, having started off as a young boy in La Habra Heights as a volunteer firefighter. I have a great affinity for the fire department and these men and women that serve us all the time. And I've always said that public service, particularly in the police and fire services, are truly the greatest citizens of all, sir. But more importantly, as now a reserve police officer, we have a saying that the reserves are truly twice a citizen. And so these people that serve us well in our fire service are a great citizen and a great leaders, but when they go and serve again on our country's behalf, a second time in a public way and put their life at risk, they are truly twice a citizen. And I'm very proud to stand up here with these men and women who are serving our people of Los Angeles, but serving our nation again a second time as reserve officers and military personnel, fighting around the world to preserve our freedoms. So I have great honor to be with you today, and also particularly because my son, like our president of council, is a member of the United States Navy and has just been assigned to his first ship, the USS Carter Hall, and would be transporting some of these great Marines abroad very shortly. So my love and respect to you, and I may God's grace all of you in your service to this country and our city. God bless you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Smith, and all of us here. Behind me, right here, are some of the greatest employees of Los Angeles. They're members of our Los Angeles City Fire Department. And they're also members of various branches of the service, from the Navy to the Army, to the Marines, and to the Air Force. But all of them also went very far away to defend this country, as Mr. Rosendahl eloquently spoke of, defending our policies and our efforts in Iraq. They all left their jobs here. They all left their families here. And they all went to Iraq and they all came back. And God, let's give them a big hand for this. David Danielson, who's a member of Task Force 10 on Olive Street, right by Staples Center, great member of the United States Navy, born in San Luis Obispo, in the center of the state, went to San Clemente High. That's a long way from San Luis Obispo. Caught a big wave. But David Danielson, I salute you, along with our colleagues here, for your service to the United States and to the city of Los Angeles. Thank you very much. Oh, God, this is a great guy to have around you. He's assigned to disaster preparedness. Please welcome James Larkins. A firefighter paramedic with Los Angeles, has combined 36 years of active and reserve duty as a lieutenant colonel with the United States Air Force, and is involved in many of our very special programs in CERT, which we're going to honor later today. James Harkins. Where'd you go to high school? Canyon High School. Oh, good, yeah. David Anthony Ariano, United States Marine. Devin Char, at 107th, in the Valley. He's a member of that fire company, 12th District. We salute you, David, for your service to the United States. Thank you so much. Bill Evans, from Clovis, California, came south to Los Angeles City Fire Department. You work at 46th on Hoover Street in the central, right in the shadow of the Coliseum, a great champion for us here. And he's in the United States Army Reserve. Give David, give Bill Evans a big hand. Excuse me. From South Torrance High, Ken Cordero is a member of the United States Army. And where you serving now? On Central Avenue, Jam Perry, Firehouse 14. Give Kenneth Cordero a big hand. Thank you. Where you working? I'm still on ICD. Oh, good. I know, but what house? Oh, I was at 57th. Oh, good. 57th, another one serving the central part of Los Angeles. Michael Contreras, a great member of the United States Navy. Give him a big hand. Fire Station 34, on Alpha Exposition, southwest Los Angeles. Great member of the United States Army Reserve, active. Thank you so much. Congratulations for your service. Thank you Greg Sanderson, a Northern Leaguer from Eagle Rock High School. We beat Eagle Rock in '69. When did you graduate? Seventy-six. Seventy-six. Well, you probably beat us in Marshall. Gregory Sanderson is to be commended for his work, United States Navy Reserve. All of these people are very special. Give Gregory a big hand.
My name is Chief Petty Officer Danielson, Fire Station 10 on the Seashift. Worked for an awesome squadron, Helicopter Combat Specialist Squadron 5. Have a guest of my executive officer, my command master chief, and my operations chief. Just want to make the statement of the last, since 2003, I've been mobilized twice. And it's been an awesome experience, not only serving my country, but also having the benefit of the LA City Fire Department and LA City to support us, us reservists, who have had to go through this hardship during this time. You've allowed us to make a dream happen as far as allowing us to serve our country, but also to come back to a very wonderful city, come back to the fire department that we love so well. So I say thank you.
Good morning. Greg Sanderson from Air Operations. Little story here. I worked for Chief Danielson. I have 20 years on the fire department. He sucked me back into the reserves. And so on occasion, I had to remind him who the rookie was over there in Iraq. But I want to thank Chief Danielson, the executive officer, and the chief from HCS-5. Undoubtedly, besides the Los Angeles Fire Department, the best group of people I've ever worked with in my whole career. They took the old guy, trained me up, sat me around a little bit, but they kept me alive in Iraq, and I made it back. So Dave, Chief Danielson, XO, chief, master chief, thank you for your help, and it was a pleasure working with you. Thank you.
Good morning. Jim Harkins, disaster preparedness, 455th Aero Medical Squadron out of Afghanistan. I was the commander. I just want to thank you all for this recognition. And I want to remind everyone that all of us here came back healthy and whole, but a number of troops are still doing their recovery. So if we can remember them and help them, volunteer to assist them, that would be another step forward in their lives. Thank you.
In case you could take the captain's tip. How you doing? I'm a firefighter Vasquez. I work at Fire Station 34. Once again, I'd just like to thank the city of Los Angeles Fire Department for holding our jobs. Coming back was very stressful for some of us. We did things we never thought we'd do. And to come back to our great job as firemen and help people and citizens of Los Angeles, it's a great feeling. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Staff Sergeant David Ariano with 5th Battalion, 14th Marines, and currently at Fire Station 107 in the Valley. I just want to say thank you very much to the city of Los Angeles for just taking care of me and my family while I was gone. But I don't know, I just kind of want to say thank you also to the guys that don't get recognized, all the guys that are over there still, and the guys that haven't gotten recognized on the department right now currently that have served over there. So thank you very much.
Good morning. I'm Michael Contreras. Still currently serving on active duty. And on behalf of my family and myself, I'd like to thank the citizens of Los Angeles and the Fire Department for having allowed me to serve. It's been a privilege and an honor, and I continue to do so, and look forward to coming home. Thank you.
Staff Sergeant Ken Cordero. Only thing I'd like to say, I'd like to thank my wife, Megan. Back here, my wife, Megan, we had our twin girls while I was gone. Can you stand Found out Megan was pregnant about a month before I left. So it was a very stressful time. She probably went through more than I did. So, thank you, Megan.
Thank you very much. My name's Lieutenant Evans. Part of Station 46 right now. And one of the biggest things I want to say is thank you very much for definitely holding our jobs, because, you know, somebody told me once, if you love your job, you really don't work a day of your life. And being a fireman is way better than anything I can think of. Thank you very much.
Mr. Zine would like to add his good wishes as well.
Thank you. I'd congratulate all of you from the LA City Fire Department. We got many city employees who are on active duty. We want to acknowledge all of them and their families. And I also want to commend the city council, our mayor, the city of Los Angeles, the gentleman with the twins, born while you were on active duty. This council has taken a very strong position to make sure your families are supported. The compensation you receive from the military isn't the same as you receive in your current position with the city, the city Fire Department. We match that to make sure that their family doesn't suffer. So I just wanted to acknowledge the city council, the mayor's office, the city of Los Angeles, the people of LA who are strongly behind you and want to make sure when you're activated that your families don't have to suffer any financial loss or any kind of frustration with that. So congratulations to all of you and to the family members. We appreciate what you do in support of the members of the city Fire Department that are called to active duty. God bless you all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Labange, for doing this and to thank all the men that were honored, especially those ones that are white and blue. The Navy fellow folks from the Navy Reserve just came from Pensacola. So actually seeing a Marine sergeant sent a shiver down my spine since he was our gunnery sergeant, was our PT director. But I know without being deployed, what a sacrifice it is to serve in the reserve component of our armed forces. But to be deployed is even a greater sacrifice. And I want to thank the men who did that. The two weeks that I was in Pensacola, we had a class of 23 officers that were being trained. We lost 24 Americans in the same two weeks in Iraq. And it puts into stark contrast just the sacrifices, the ultimate sacrifices that some of the men and women that we serve with make. So God bless you all. Welcome back to those who are returning. And thank you for everybody for being here as well.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti. I want to thank Commander Engelhardt, who ironically, I offered him to come up here and make a few words, make a little speech. He doesn't believe in free speeches. He believes in fighting for them. And that's what these people do. They fight for our country and for what we believe is right. And I want to thank them. And I want to say also, as Mr. Zine said so eloquently, the people of Los Angeles truly deserve credit for the establishment of a system that supports the employees who serve the city of Los Angeles when their call is to serve this country. And that is so special. We're going to go in the back room and take some pictures and have a good time. But let's everybody stand and salute these great Los Angeles City employees, these great members
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. I'd next like to recognize from the 6th Council District, Councilman Tony Cardenas for a very special presentation on a very special month.
Good morning, colleagues in Los Angeles. I just wanted to announce Deaf Awareness Month one more time for the city of Los Angeles. I'm very proud of the city council, as in 2003, we declared September Deaf Awareness Month. And with that, this will be the third year in a row in which we enact opportunities around the city for us to increase awareness about deaf and hard-of-hearing. There are 400,000 deaf, deaf-blind, and hard-of-hearing individuals in the city of Los Angeles alone. That does not include the surrounding communities in the county. This is a great opportunity for Los Angeles residents to learn about and be exposed to the deaf culture and language. Local activities and deaf events in recognition of Deaf Awareness Month are going on throughout the city and culminating on September 30th, next Saturday, at Woodley Park from 12:00 noon to 6:00 p.m. This is free to the public. This is the third year in a row. The first year, we had over 3,000 individuals from around California that came down for this event. And then last year, we had over 5,000 individuals. And we anticipate it's going to grow to that magnitude, if not greater. It's a great opportunity to witness this community and to understand that they are mainstream, just like anyone else. It is up to us to understand. It is up to us to help with that awareness. And it's up to us to make sure that these activities continue to flourish and that every community, including the deaf community, be included in every activity that we are a part of. It's my opportunity today to remind you that, again, this event is free, the culminating event on the 30th of this month. And for the first 40 people who come and ask for this DVD, we're going to be giving out this DVD to 40 families. And this is an opportunity for them to, once again, have more tools for them and their families. And we're going to give 200 of these ASL and communication to learn how to communicate with deaf children. These are opportunities, just two examples of the opportunities that people are going to have to gain more awareness and to have this opportunity within the city of Los Angeles and throughout the state of California. It's my honor right now to begin the presentations of individuals that the council districts have chosen to honor in this month of deaf awareness. The first person is someone who's no stranger to us. Anyone who's ever turned on a TV or watched some of the most famous movies in the world know who Lupe Ontiveros is. At this time, I'd like Lupe to come up. We all know her as an actress. We all know her as a producer. But some wonderful, lucky individuals know her as an activist within the community beyond the city of Los Angeles. And we honor her today for her many years of dedication to the deaf community and many other causes. But today, it's the deaf community that we're honoring her for. And she and her family have dealt with this issue and worked through this issue, and they're a model for many families. And for all of us to understand that being deaf does not mean that you should be excluded, that being hard-of-hearing does not mean that you should consider yourself outside. Miss Ontiveros is a perfect example of understanding, a perfect example of integrating, and a perfect example of going above and beyond the duty to make sure that people feel welcome, they feel included, and that she extends her hand to assist in any way that she can. And with that, I'd like Miss Ontiveros to say a few words.
Buenos dias. A mi comunidad. Good morning, everybody. Good morning. I wish to thank the city council this morning for this recognition. I wish to thank Antonio Cardenas and his office and his staff. I also wish to thank the city of Los Angeles for this day, and it should be every day when you come together, that these hands would be saying, speaking, communicating what the city is saying about us. Meaning, there should be an interpreter in this room every time you meet. That I would appreciate. I am very proud, very proud. I accept this recognition in behalf of my two sons, Nicholas and Alexander, who are hearing impaired and deaf. This started 40 years ago, that we came together as mother and son. And from then on, it's been the struggle, it's been a road of faith, passion, commitment, and respect, and advocacy. I will always advocate for this community. It is my community. Please accept it as yours. As hello, we're voters. So thank you very much. I do appreciate this moment, and I thank you again.
Miss Ontiveros, I'd just like to point out, we do what we do not to earn your vote, but to earn your respect. So thank you so much for all of your involvement, but also for all of your constructive criticism as you allow us to gain more awareness through your awareness and through your activity. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If I may leave you with just a few words here that are very close to me, and it says, what matters deafness of the year? "What matters deafness of the ear when the mind hears? The true one deafness is that of the mind." Thank you.
Next, I would like to honor Bill Pugan, who owns Sign Language Company. And much like Miss Ontiveros, he's very active in creating awareness and respect for the deaf and hard-of-hearing community. But I would like to point something out, especially for the young people who are watching, who are wondering how they can get involved and how they can help the community as a whole. There are many things to say about him, but I'd like to point this out. He has been the interpreter for such films as The River Wild and Hear No Evil, and political events, including the Bush-Dukakis debate and President Carter's inauguration. These events were unique honors for Pugan because he helped open the political system to non-hearing people, allowing them to be equals in the election process. That says many things, but two things I'd like to point out to the young people, as I mentioned earlier. To, to learn this skill, to learn how to communicate with more of your community, to learn how to do so can actually open doors for you to actually have better opportunities of getting jobs and being a communicator and a conveyor of information for whoever you work for. Bill is a perfect example of someone who fell into the opportunity of realizing that this has taken him to much more career opportunities. And I point out, he didn't do it because he wanted more career opportunities. He did it out of his heart. But in addition to that, he was able to benefit by creating more awareness and give, he was given more opportunities to actually be in the presidential debate of the United States of America, representing the deaf and hard-of-hearing community and beginning what we now take for granted today. It was about time, and we would like to recommend Mr. Bill Pugan for that opportunity and for his efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. Wow, I interpreted Jimmy Carter's inauguration. I really feel old now. Thank you for reminding me of that. I got into this profession through my sister. My sister is eight years older than I, and she's deaf. And it's been a wonderful road for me, owning my agency, working at the Sign Language Company, and working with the deaf clientele that we serve, and being here in Los Angeles and providing services here. I've also, with other careers that I've had, been involved with television and film. And as a matter of fact, last night, worked until the wee hours on Navy NCIS, helping Mark Harmon learn a few signs, which is not an easy task, believe me. So I'm happy to be here today, and thank you once again for this recognition. I really appreciate it.
At this time, I'd like to bring up my colleagues, one at a time, to recognize some people from their community, from their district. And we'll begin by inviting Councilmember Wendy Grule to come up.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas, and thank you for your leadership on Deaf Awareness Month and the activities at the recreation facility, the Balboa Rec Center that we have. I have a special opportunity today to recognize a young woman who, believe it or not, had a baby three weeks ago. I only wish I looked that good, three weeks after I had a baby. But Cheyenne began to have progressive loss of hearing at the age of two and a half years of age, and at 12, after a head cold, she lost her hearing entirely. In June of 1992, Cheyenne had a cochlear implant, followed by three years of speech therapy. And today, when you first meet her, you wouldn't notice that she had that hearing loss in her speech. And a documentary has, in fact, been completed on her case at the House Ear Institute. She is the owner of Cheyenne's Bookstore on Foothill Boulevard. We encourage all of you to go there, and currently the honorary mayor of Sunland Tahunga. She's also a board member of the Sunland Tahunga Chamber of Commerce. And for this family, community participation in activism is really a family affair. She is the granddaughter of Kathy Anthony and the niece of Jim Moore, President, Kathy was past president of the Sunland Tahunga Chamber, and Jim is currently the president, and niece of Art Minor, who is president of the Riverwood Homeowner Association. She graduated from Verdugo Hills High School in 1997 and attended Glendale Community College. Her daughter Shelby was born when she was 26 years old now, and her son Matthew just three weeks ago. And we're here, pleased to have with her her mother, Diana, and her sister, Danielle, as well as her little boy, who's being very quiet over there, Matthew, for three weeks old. But it is, is my pleasure to introduce someone who, again, has taken what she has as far as her cochlear implant. We were hearing today about the challenges with FDA not until a few years ago allowing this, and the cost of doing that, and the cost to a single parent at the time of having to find the money to do that and their relationship with the Lions Club. But she has really become an activist and a person I'm very proud to say is part of our family in the Sunland Tahunga area. Let's give a great round of applause for Cheyenne Lee Morris. Okay, I just want to say thank you to Wendy for giving me this opportunity, and this is definitely an honor, so thank you very much.
They all look like sisters. Exactly. Next, I'd like to invite Councilmember Dennis Zine to come forward.
I don't want to mess up your notes here. Thank you. I want to acknowledge, last year, I was with you at Woodley Park, and I remember a photo in the newspaper. Tom Laban and I were pushing up a tree, one of the activities there. I don't know, what was it?
Rock climb.
Rock climb, a rock climb. I thought it was a tree, but it was a rock climb, okay. I want to acknowledge what you brought this about, because I was a member of your staff that made you aware of this, and since then, it's expanded to this wonderful opportunity we have today. Jeannie Gertz. Jeannie, come on forward. We met this morning in the chambers here, come closer, back in the chamber. Jeannie lives in Woodland Hills, where she has been affiliated with the Department of Deaf Studies at California State University at Northridge since 1995. As a full-time lecturer and, most recently, an assistant professor, she obtained a doctorate from UCLA in social science and comparative education with a concentration on racial and ethnic studies. Earned also a master's and a bachelor's degree. Born in St. Petersburg, Russia, came to America with her family when she was eight years old. Been organizing social, educational, and cultural programs to promote interaction between deaf studies majors and members of greater Los Angeles deaf communities, most notably the Los Angeles Deaf Festival. Her contributions to the community are numerous and include serving as a World Federation of the Deaf Expert in the Area of Deaf Women, board member of Deaf Women United, coordinator of the Deaf Women SIG for the 2007 World Congress, World Federation of the Deaf in Madrid, Spain, and as organizer and facilitator of lecture series and programs. We want to acknowledge you for your personal accomplishments and also commend you for your commitment and dedication to helping the deaf and for improving the quality of life for the people of Los Angeles. And we have for you this resolution signed by all of the city leaders, acknowledging all that you have done and committing you for that activity. So, Jeannie, congratulations. And our photographer is going to get a couple pictures right now with the three of us, and congratulations for what you've accomplished.
I'm going to keep it brief. I wanted to thank you for this honor. I didn't expect this, but I really feel humbled, but in the same time, I want to impress that it's important to focus of all of my work from the past, present, and forward is the betterment of the deaf people, to recognition of language and the culture and everybody. So I want to thank all of you for this.
Next, we have Councilmember Herb Wesson.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas. I want to say this before I bring up the individual from my district that I want to recognize. I had an opportunity to serve in the legislature for four years with Mr. Cardenas. And he is so passionate about certain things, and this is a wonderful thing for you to spearhead. And I just want anybody that's paying attention to know that whenever Mr. Cardenas brings something to this council, it is because he genuinely feels strong about it. And I want to commend you for your sensitivity. In fact, there were times in the legislature where you almost got a tear. You had a tear, but you almost got me, had me crying. But anyway, it is my pleasure to present, Gavin? Gavin's right behind me. Now, Gavin has been a dear friend of my office and myself, and I just want to take a few moments highlighting why we recognized him during this, this month. Gavin is a member of the United Neighborhoods of the Historic Arlington Heights and West Adams Area, the Jefferson Park and Communities Neighborhood Council. He is a recreation aide for wrecks and parks at the South Seas House, which is this refurbished gorgeous structure in the 10th District. There, he tutors kids in math, not just math, I'm talking algebra and geometry. He would like, in fact, you can help me do this, he wants us to give a shout-out to the kids at the Marlton Deaf School. So, so to all of the kids, this is from Gavin. He was named Father of the Year by the West Hollywood Presbyterian Church and the West Adams Heritage Association. He is the foster father, or has been the foster father, for six kids, and he is an Academy Award winner. He won, it was a documentary about the abuse of dolphins, and he won Best Film Short Documentary back in 1991. It is my pleasure to present to you a dear friend, a good man, Gavin Glenn.
Good morning. Thank you very much. I thank you for acknowledging my accomplishment as a, as a hearing impaired person, and I'm so impressed of the distinction between deaf and hearing impaired. We are a community that works well together, but we are two separate communities. And we have tremendous compassion for each other, but we do hear differently, but we do think the same. It's important, I would like to make one mention, especially of those of you in council today. As I went to the House Hearing Clinic today, there's a big sign that says, "We no longer accept any insurance. Hearing aids is never covered by private insurance." It's been a private war of mine when I worked for 20th Century Fox, for Walt Disney Company. Hearing aids are never covered because they think it's an old-person thing and Medicare will pay for it. We are, I urge all of you to somehow communicate with John Garamendi, to have the Insurance Commission look into this and understand why one person gets eye contacts, glasses. I have a friend who lost his leg to diabetes and had it replaced, but we do not insure hearing aids. That's all. I'd like to give a special thanks, and thank you so much for this acknowledgement today.
Mr. Reyes would like to say something brief. I know we have another council member that will be making a presentation. Mr. Reyes.
Councilman Cardenas, I wanted to thank you and your speaker for bringing up such an important point for advocacy to have insurance for hearing aids. In our communities, many of our community members are retired workers in factories, manufacturing centers, places where they have very loud machinery. Now that they are in their golden years, in their senior years, they have to suffer because of the lack of support from our government and not allowing the insurance to cover hearing aids. So it is a major quality of life issue for many of our seniors who are in their 60s and 70s, have limited income, fixed income, with no access to that support. So I want to thank them for bringing that up. It's a very crucial issue for many of our members of our communities. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And that's what we're trying to do, is create that awareness. Next, we have Councilmember Greg Smith, who has someone he'd like to recognize from his district.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President and Mr. Cardenas for this opportunity. I'm always very pleased, first of all, to talk about Cal State Northridge. California State University of Northridge started a program many years ago to work with handicapped and deaf students in particular, has become not just a leader in California, but truly a leader in the United States of America in working with deaf students. And we're very proud of that program. The gentleman I have here today is associated with that, and I'll tell you a little bit about that in just a moment. Mark Allen Corson came from the city of Brotherly Love. Unfortunately, he didn't bring any cheesesteak sandwiches with him today, but nonetheless, he comes from the city of Brotherly Love, where he attended the Deaf Nursery School and Pennsylvania School for the Deaf. He graduated from Gallaudet University in Washington, D.C. in 1968 with a bachelor's degree in Business Administration and Economics. More importantly, while he was there, he was very active in many activities. He was in student body government, worked on the student newspaper, worked with the Department of Athletics and Athletic Affairs, was active in Kappa Gamma Fraternity, the National Student Association of Representatives, and was a student body government president. He came to the city of Los Angeles and San Fernando Valley in 1970, where he attended Cal State Northridge in his school of education and deaf education and business administration graduate studies. In 1990, he was asked by CSUN to attend the National Leadership Training Program and received a master's degree in education, administration, and supervision. Since coming to Los Angeles, he's also been a leader in the deaf community. He is president of the Valley Silent Club, athletic director of Hollywood Silent Recreation Club, president of the L.A. Chapter of Gallaudet Alumni, University Alumni Associations. In 2004, he formed an organization called Dyna Mingle, a nonprofit organization providing leadership and recreational opportunities for our young deaf leaders, and has been president and CEO ever since. Dyna Mingle sponsors athletic and recreational programs in basketball, flag football, softball, and other sports for the deaf. Mark is currently teaching at CSUN Deaf History and Deaf Studies Department at Cal State Northridge. He lives in Granada Hills with his wife and two grown sons. And again, anybody that participates in the Cal State Northridge University program is truly an extraordinary person because that is an extraordinary program that we're very proud of. And I'm very proud to represent to you our representative this year on this award, Mark Allen Corson. Mark, congratulations.
Really, it's my honor and pleasure to be here again and again because I've met so many mayors since I've been here, starting with Sam Yordi. I haven't met the, the current mayor yet, but we really are improving a lot. In the past, there were no interpreters, there were no TV captioning, and we have gone a long way. But you all are working with us for our great But you all are working with us for our great L.A. city, so thank you.
Once again, this is Deaf Awareness Month, and on the 30th, right here in Los Angeles in the San Fernando Valley, we're going to have our Deaf Awareness Festival. Again, it's free. 3,000 people showed up three years ago. Over 5,000 people showed up last year, and this year, I anticipate we'll probably have as many as 10,000 people from all over the state of California and beyond. And again, it's free from 12 noon to 6:00 P.M. The weather's been gorgeous out here. I'm not going to guarantee it, but I can promise you, weather permitting, it is just going to be a tremendous festival for everyone to enjoy. It's about awareness, it's about bringing communities together, and it's the biggest free festival in the entire state of California. So, that's one of the reasons why it's such a tremendous success. So, thank you all very much for participating in this month's Deaf Awareness Month. At this point in time, I'd like to introduce a star that is among us. We have many stars today. This is Los Angeles, and I'd like to bring up to the podium Noelia, por favor. Noelia is extremely talented, and she was determined at the age of three to begin singing and to begin to set her mind on having such a wonderful and what has turned out to be an illustrious career. She was born in San Juan, Puerto Rico, and she decided to really hone her skills from the age of three, culminating in junior high and in high school by producing talent shows and musicals and plays. And beyond that, at the age of 18, she started her formal career, and since then, she is now one of the most renowned singers throughout the world. Let me give you some examples. Noelia has a new production for EMI Televisa Music, and also, Noelia has sold more than 3 million records. She also has 10 radio hits on Billboard's Top 40, and Noelia has the reputation of transmitting her feelings and emotions into every song. In addition to that, she has actually broken many, many barriers. For example, she's invaded the Iberian Peninsula with the uptempo movements of her candelas, obtaining for her the Summer Song Award. And also, Noelia broke barriers when she was honored with the highest award of prestigious, at the prestigious festival bar de Italia. And no, they don't speak Spanish in Italy. They speak kind of fast like us, but it's not Spanish, it's different. The point to you is that not only is her singing well respected and appreciated and enjoyed by people who speak and understand Spanish, it's being enjoyed by people around the world. And today, I wanted to honor Noelia because of her groundbreaking abilities and her commitment to her craft and to show all of the young people in the world, if you have a dream, pursue it. If you have a dream, all you need to do is work hard. If you have a dream, you can actually become a star. And not only a star, but someone like Noelia. She's a star, but she's a good human being, she has a wonderful heart, and she's involved in many, many activities that have bring young people and many people together. So, with that, Noelia, por favor, unas palabras.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas, and thank you to the city of Los Angeles. I'm very honored to be receiving this recognition, and it's a pleasure to be living here in such a magical place. Thank you very much. Estoy muy emocionada, muy agradecida con este reconocimiento. Es algo que no esperaba tan pronto. Gracias por esas palabras tan lindas, señor Cardenas. Y sí espero estar envuelta en muchas, muchas cosas en las que pueda ayudar como ser humano aquí en la ciudad de Los Angeles, en California, y también como artista. Muchas gracias.
Noelia, queremos presentarle con este reconocimiento oficial de la Ciudad de Los Angeles. Al final va a tener las firmas del alcalde de todos los elegidos aquí en la Ciudad de Los Angeles. Bienvenida aquí a Los Angeles, y que sigue con mucho éxito. Gracias. Thank you very much. For those of you listening, I just wanted to interpret, I just presented her with a resolution, official resolution, on behalf of the City of Los Angeles. It will have the signatures of the Mayor of Los Angeles, Rocky Delgado, and all of the elected officials, including every council member. Once again, welcome to Los Angeles, and we wish you continued and much success. Thank you, Noelia.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. While the next presentation is coming up from Council District 10, I would like to ask Council President Garcetti to introduce a very special guest in our chamber this morning.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and this is not meant to be any formal presentation, but I did want to honor and introduce a very special person here for Los Angeles nationally and internationally, Martin Luther King III, who is here in Los Angeles. Please give him a round of applause and welcome him here to the city. It is fitting today that we are talking about issues on Friday of civil rights and justice, the Deaf Awareness Month that we had, service to one's country. Currently, Martin King has just started a new organization, which I'd like him to just say a couple of words about, and he's here on a, I just said "listening" before, but it's actually looking, listening, and learning tour to take in this city as part of this country and to learn what can be done to continue the vision of social justice that his entire family has fought for so powerfully throughout our country. So, that, I'd like to welcome him to our council chambers and ask him to say a couple of words.
Mr. Rosendahl wanted to speak before our guest speaks. Mr. Garcetti, he's pushed his button to say a few words. Mr. Rosendahl.
I just wanted to acknowledge, as our conversation, as the president brought you around the horseshoe to meet us, the stories about both your mother and your father that I've had the pleasure of interacting with. Your father was in 1967, when Carl Stokes was the first African-American elected mayor of a major city, and the conversation we had about his commitment to public service and to making the world a better place. I was a kid, about 21, in graduate school, and he gave me this incredible boost that we can make a difference in the political process. And in 1972, when your mother was a champion of George McGovern, I assigned my brother to bring her in and out of the convention and make sure she was taken care of. But more importantly, afterwards, I spoke to your mother once a week and gave her updates on the campaign, his campaign for presidency. So, it's a great honor to have the son of probably one of our most historic couples in American history. Congratulations for coming for us. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Our special guest, please.
Sorry, couldn't hear. Guest, please.
Council President Garcetti, and to each and every council member, and to the public of Los Angeles and Los Angeles County, it is certainly a special honor to be back in this city. I think this is my first time to this chamber, but I come to Los Angeles quite often. As Council President Garcetti stated, I have embarked upon a major initiative. As many know, my father in 1967 was working on something called the Poor People's Campaign, designed to bring poor blacks, poor whites, poor Native Americans, poor Americans from all walks of life, together to go to Washington to say to our nation's policymakers that we deserve the right to decent jobs with decent pay. Of course, he did not live to see that dream realized. 39 years later, I've started an organization called Realizing the Dream. Part of what we hope to do, and what we've done over the last two and a half months, is travel across our nation, trying to focus America's attention on poverty. We all know, of course, but I often say, we ought to be ashamed of ourselves in this nation with all of the wealth that we have, and yet, we still have so much poverty, whether it's in Los Angeles, or whether it's in Pine Ridge, South Dakota, where Native Americans live, whether it's in the Appalachian region of our country where white Americans live, and now Latinos and Hispanics are moving in, whether it's in urban America, as we see the faces of black and Latino and Hispanic poverty. Poverty is something we must do something about. After we complete our 20-city tour, this is about our 12th city, we will engage in a summit in November, bringing together individuals from each community we visited to share our findings, because we are chronicling this tour through video as well as writing. And then, after that summit, I plan to launch an initiative across America that we'll be talking about later on. We'll be doing a big announcement during the King Holiday every year. Of course, we know we observe the King Holiday across our nation and actually throughout our world, and so I'll be launching an initiative that I hope will begin a process of addressing poverty. Realizing the Dream will do some other things, but right now, I just want to have us, we're focusing on poverty, and for a long time, we're going to be focusing on poverty. America can and must do a better job, and I thank you as council members for allowing me this privilege to be here today. And for the next day and a half, we'll be touring this community of Los Angeles. Thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you very much for visiting with us today. Mr. Wesson, you'll be next. And while Mr. Wesson is coming up, I want to say welcome to the young folks from Santee Education Complex here with their teacher, Mr. Bolanos. They are students from Public Service and Social Justice Small Learning Community. Thank you for being here, and what a rare treat it is for you to get to see the son of Dr. Martin Luther King. So, make sure you say hello to him. Eric, if you would let the young people say hello to him for a second, it would be a once-in-a-lifetime experience for many of these young people, so I appreciate it very much. And welcome to all the students. And Mr. Wesson is, this is not best in show, Mr. Wesson. Let's see how you walk the dog. Dog needs more training.
Anyway, good morning. This is my favorite day, it's Pet Adoption Friday. And what I have today, I mean, you can't pass on this one. It doesn't get any better than this. His name is Scotty. Scotty is only a year and a half, so this is about as big as Scotty's going to get. He is, and I'm going to try to pronounce this correctly, Scotty, a Bijon Frise, whatever, Bijon Frise. He has all of his spots, I mean shots, he's ready to go. He's microchipped, he's just nervous up here. I really think that Councilman Parks would love to take, would love to take Scotty, Scotty home, but he wants to take him with my other four dogs. But anyway, Scotty's looking for a home. You want unconditional love, trust me, you can get it from one of our companion animals. And don't feel frustrated if you call in because you want Scotty, and I'm sure the phone's going to be ringing off the hook, but if Scotty has already been adopted, please know we've got six shelters and hundreds of companion animals just like Scotty. I also want to take one moment to announce that tomorrow morning, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 a.m. at Rancho Cienega Park, which is at 5101 Rodeo Road, we're going to have an adoption pet fair. So, please come, and if you can bring your dog, we'll be providing neutering, microchipping, and all of that good stuff. So, anybody in the audience that wants Scotty, Scotty wants you, please let us know. My guess is, before I get to the end of the chambers, Scotty will be adopted. So, if you want him, you better holler. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Labonge for our next presentation. Mr. Labonge.
Ms. Han, would you please join me here at this presentation, because you've been so special in your efforts to keep the fort secure and improved in its security, because members filed in behind me, next to the chief of the Los Angeles Fire Department, is a great members of various organizations, our community emergency preparedness teams. And this is National Preparedness Month, and I'm joined by Ellis Stanley, our General Manager of our Department of Emergency Preparedness. And members, it is important to be prepared, so important to be prepared, and the city of Los Angeles is always focused on that. Remember the days, many days of earlier earthquakes, the great support we got from Bill Fujioka, our city administrative officer, to make sure that we were fully funded in this area? Of all the various challenges that Los Angeles has had, every time there's been a challenge, we've improved our way to respond to that challenge. The disaster struck our city, whether that's an earthquake, fire, floods, or even a civil disobedience, we have these challenges that we have to meet and be ready for. Southern California continues to be at risk for damaging earthquakes, over 150 years since the San Andreas Fault. And visiting recently, Ms. Han, with Lucy Jones from Caltech at the USGS, she said, "Watch out, Tom, it's coming again," and we have to be prepared. The loss of life and property can be greatly reduced if appropriate action is taken to be prepared. So, this month of September, the federal government has called for the Declaration of National Preparedness Month, and I, as a councilman of the 4th District hereby, call for First Friday Preparedness, like in the old days when we were in school, right, Ms. Han? 10:00 a.m. every Friday, they sounded off sirens. No sirens anymore, but we're going to have drop drills and exit drills and get people aware, because the challenge will come again. And this is what it's all about at National Preparedness Month. So, I'm very pleased to be here today as we gather and sign this commendation by Mayor Viva Gosa, and all the members of council. And before I ask Ellis Stanley to speak and the chief to speak, I would like to ask the councilwoman of the 15th District, who does such a great job for the city of Los Angeles and all of the Port of Los Angeles, Ms. Han, for remarks.
Thank you, Councilmember Labonge. And it's so important that we're declaring this as National Preparedness Month, and I'm very pleased to be standing here with one of the best fire chiefs in any fire department in the country, who has always talked about how important it is, particularly for the two areas that I think were most vulnerable, and that's the airport and the Port of Los Angeles. We now have two assistant chiefs who are responsible for security and are responsible for preparedness and are responsible for evacuation in the event at both those entities if something were to happen. And when you talk about the earthquake, one of the things that I'm concerned at, and some people laugh at me, but I'm concerned that that earthquake might come, and it'll come between Catalina and the San Pedro Bay, and it will actually produce what could be known as a tsunami, that would, we would have less than a half an hour before it hit the Port of Los Angeles and the low-lying areas of Wilmington and San Pedro. I've been assured that the fire department is looking at that as a possible scenario for preparedness and evacuation. I couldn't agree that we have no better department than the fire department, looking at both those entities to make sure that if and when something were to happen, either at the airport or the port, we will not only be prepared, but we will be prepared to respond and evacuate if we have to. So, this is a great opportunity to bring awareness to that entities. Thank you.
Ms. Han, thank you very much. I appreciate those remarks. Give her a big hand there now. And also, I'd like to call on our great General Manager of Emergency Preparedness, Mr. Ellis Stanley, to give us a little more focus on this very important month.
Thank you, Councilman Labonge. Okay. And all the members of the city council, and really, our entire city family. This is a collaborative effort. Yes, it's National Preparedness Month, but we make sure that here in Los Angeles, it is Emergency Preparedness Month for Los Angeles as well. And it's not something that's just done by one department. We want to thank all of our departments, Fire Department, Community Redevelopment. We want to thank the Department of Ward and Power. We want to thank all of the departments for helping us to make sure that this is a recognized week and that we push preparedness down to the individuals. It was pretty significant today that you honor the troops abroad and the troops that work here in this city. But these others with our CERT teams are the troops on the streets here that's going to be ready to help us meet our next disaster. And it's important that today, as we recognize also, the ERT Challenge. That's where we bring teams, both in public and private sector, together as a skills-based Olympiad, to keep their training up, to make sure that we have things going. And I'd like to challenge each of the council members that next year, that you get one CERT team from your district and have them compete in this national... you get one CERT team from your district and have them compete in this nationwide-recognized competition. The Business and Industry Council on Emergency Planning and Preparedness, BICEP, and Emergency Preparedness Department has been sponsoring this program, and it's achieved great recognition. And we want to make sure it grows. And we have a great team, this time, representing winners in the private sector. We have Universal Emergency 51. And then we also have in the public sector, we have Redondo Beach Reptiles. So it's very important that we keep these programs going and make sure that we get things out there. Three activities was going on this month, Emergency Preparedness Month, ERT Challenge. And every weekend, we've had some type of event in your malls, in your communities. And we want to thank the sponsors very graciously for doing that with us. Von Safeway, Northrop Grumman, The Gas Company, Convention Center, DWP, CRA. All of those have been very proactive, good year. And we're gonna be presenting some things back in the room with them. So I want to thank everybody for being here with us. And the volunteers and all the support we've gotten from the fire departments. And if you look at the fire department buildings, you'll see some banners on there signifying this month. Chief?
Thank you very much, Ellis. Let's have Chief
Okay, Mr. Zine would like to say something as well. Mr. Zine?
If you could hold this just for a second, so Chief Ramachi can make it.
Maybe the chiefs should close. I just want to compliment the fire department. I was at the Universal where you had the, the public service announcement where that was released. And last Saturday at Northridge Mall where you had the emergency preparedness, all the people who came out and the wonderful people from your department that were there, along with the fire department and all the wonderful people. And I know we think about it once a year, Emergency Preparedness Month, but it should be every single day, because we did, but we don't know. And the new slogan that, that you have, chief, I know you want to close with those comments. I don't want to step on that. But again, congratulations to all the folks that helped make this happen. I know what it is, Tom, but I don't want to step on the chief's toes. So congratulations to all of you. Keep up the good work. Emergency preparedness is very important. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. It is really a partnership. As Ellis said, there's no one single department in the city. It's a partnership and a collaboration, but it's really the people that you see behind us, because the city itself, despite its size, needs to have the citizenry participate. And this disaster preparedness, I can't emphasize how important that is. And it's the foundation, the cornerstone, as we're looking forward to preparing for any type of disaster, whether it's natural or by design. And it's extremely important. I'll use a quick example from last night. I received a page about 8 o'clock. There was a plane coming to the Los Angeles airport that had landing gear problems. And we ended up with over about 12 ambulances and additional resources, other than those assigned to the airport, to prepare for the potential of a disaster and a multi-casualty disaster. And so those things are going on, on a regular basis, and they're integrated with our CERT teams, the emergency response teams. And we're building a safety net, a foundation of disaster preparedness here in the city that can meet any of the challenges as Councilman Han mentioned, whether it's a tsunami, whether it's a plane crash, whether it's some type of terrorist event. And that's something that I appreciate the tremendous of support here at the council. And it is important that this month is disaster preparedness and will be from now on. And we have a motto, which is, you cannot predict, but you can prepare. And that's what we want everybody to be a part of. So thank you so much, Councilman Labange, for bringing that to us.
And the plane did land safely? You didn't give us the results?
Yes, I'm sorry. The plane did land safely. And tomorrow, we will be having an event in Baldwin Hills. Councilman Parks's district, where he grew up as a youngster many, many years ago.
But he joined the wrong, he joined the wrong department.
And certainly welcoming the public to come on out and learn a little bit more about disaster preparedness. It's very simple to be prepared in your own home for about a seven-day period, which will give you tremendous confidence and allow you to lend your services to those that are in need, that aren't as well-prepared in a major emergency. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chief, Chief Ramachi, thank you. Ms. Han, thank you. Ellis Stanley, thank you. And I just got to close with Captain Martinez, right? These are the winners from Redondo Beach. Say a few words. They're very happy. I know. Now, I know. Now, Ms. Han, let's give a little love for Redondo Beach.
Okay.
I love Redondo Beach.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank LA City and LA City Fire Department in particular. It's their extensive efforts in the development of the CERT program that got Redondo started. In fact, in 1995, I believe, two of LA City finest trained me to get this program started in Redondo. So I want to say thank you for that. And as far as our team back there from Redondo Beach, for Redondo Beach, I got to say, we are so proud of them and the efforts that they put in and their, their work towards preparedness made us all very proud. Thank you.
Good job. Good job, Redondo Beach. Remember this great city of Los Angeles. There's 88 cities in the county. When it all happens, we all gotta work together. And from Universal City, we have
Nancy Matthews.
Nancy Matthews, a great employee of NBC, Universal, Universal Studios. Say a few words as the corporate team that won.
Yes, thank you. And Tom might remember too, we're in his district. We too have been, had a great opportunity to work. It's the hundreds of people that got involved last weekend at the competition, all won. Because it takes every single individual getting better prepared for our community to be able to recover from this disaster. So not only the 20 wonderful human beings here, the 150 others that participated, and the thousands throughout this city and this county that have gotten involved and taken the training not to get in the competition. That was just fun and gracious of everybody to put it on from the LA City and BICEP. But also to just get to know each other better and be ready to help their own community and their own families recover from that disaster.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Universal City. Thank you, Redondo Beach. Thank you, Ellis Stanley. Thank you, Chief Ramachi and Ms. Han for joining me. Madam President, I relieve the microphone to you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Our next presentations are by Mr. Zine.
Morning. For you guys. Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. Leukemia and Lymphoma Society serves an estimated 747,000 Americans who are presently living with leukemia, lymphoma, melanoma. Every five minutes, nearly 300, every day, somebody in the United States learns that they have one of the blood-related cancers. The Society is one of the fastest-growing, highest-rated health agencies in America, with 66 chapters nationwide, directs nearly 75% of its expenditures to support mission-related programs and services that include research, patient services, advocacy, and education. The Leukemia and Lymphoma Society provides assistance to 10 chapter area family support groups and provides direct support to several hundred patients through First Connection, a peer-to-peer support program for patients and survivors, the Trish Green Back to School Program, and local patient education programs. Assistance is available to all patients without discrimination as to age, race, color, or creed. These programs are available year-round. The reason we're bringing Leukemia and Lymphoma Society before council today and the people of Los Angeles, to let them know that on October 8th, at Warner Center Park, the Society will host the Light the Night event. Light the Night is a national event that includes a 2.8-mile evening, very leisure, casual walk and festival. It is not a marathon run, it is a walk. Light the Night stands apart from other events, in that walkers carry illuminated balloons to celebrate the lives of children and loved ones affected by cancer. White balloons for survivors, red balloons for all participants as signs of hope. Major participants are corporation partners and families. Light the Night is the fastest-growing national walk event and is expanding its reach in Los Angeles County with addition of a walk site in Santa Clarita Valley this year. It's a very important event that supports Leukemia and Lymphoma Society and its mission to find a cure for leukemia, lymphoma, Hodgkin's disease, and to improve the quality of life for patients and their families. And we welcome to the city of Los Angeles the residents to participate in this event. And we have a resolution, and I'll, we'll hear some words from the representatives. What we find, and I've participated in this for the last few years, it's a wonderful opportunity for people to show support financially and otherwise. There are members of law enforcement, members of the fire service, public safety, any and all individuals can be affected by this. And this walk, we want to fill Warner Center Park. There's other walks that have taken place throughout this region, but this is a walk for the Valley people to come out and show their support for Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. And we have two representatives here. I don't know who's gonna go first, but
You go first?
Okay, there we go.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Honorable councilmembers, my name is Pete Ducheno, and it's a particular honor and pleasure for me to address you today. You see, I have many connections to the city. I live in the city. I go to work in the city. Even my wife is from the city, having lived her entire life within a few block radius in the city. I have one other very important connection to this city, and that is that my five-year-old son, Jacob, has undergone treatment for leukemia for the past two and a half years in Westwood at the UCLA Medical Center. And while I have no greater admiration for the doctors and nurses at the UCLA Medical Center, I only wish that Jacob didn't have to go through what he goes through. You see, while the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society has made great strides in the fight against blood cancers, there's still a long, long ways to go. And that's why we're here today, is to raise awareness of that fight and the crucial need for that fight. I can tell you firsthand through personal observations that blood cancers affect all ages, all races, and all social backgrounds. And in fact, many, in fact, many people that are affected by blood cancers are not in the position to advocate on their own behalf, whether it be my elderly neighbor or little ones like my, like my young son. When Jacob was first diagnosed with leukemia two and a half years ago, many folks, many people with good intentions, innocently remarked, well, thank goodness it's leukemia, because isn't that quite treatable? What they didn't know is that little kids like Jacob must endure over three years of intense chemotherapy, frequent chemotherapy. And those who do survive, and many do survive, can suffer lifelong side effects, whether it be increased obesity or whether it be learning disabilities. Not to mention that the fabric of many of their families is torn apart over the long course of treatment. So I ask you, treatment for leukemia and lymphoma and other blood cancers need to be greatly improved. They need to be shortened. They need to be less painful. And they also need to be greatly affected. I just want to close with one short story about my son, and that is that he loves to plant a garden in our backyard. And this year, we did what we usually did. We planted the garden. We tilled the soil. We planted the seeds. And then we watered it diligently. But for some reason, it didn't grow. And when he asked why it didn't grow, I couldn't tell him why it didn't grow. And ironically, this past spring, despite Jacob being on all of his treatment, diligently taking his medication, he relapsed and his cancer came back. And we don't know why it didn't grow, why it came back, but it did. And he'll now have to endure many years of more treatment and more intense treatment. So it's my goal someday, and I wish that you would help us raise awareness, that no two planting seasons will pass between someone's diagnosis for the blood cancer and their cure. Thank you.
I want to thank Dennis, Councilman Dennis Zine, and the rest of the council for allowing us to be here to create awareness of these blood cancers. The walk is a wonderful opportunity for families and businesses and coworkers and employee teams to come out and spread awareness, raise funds for much-needed research, and to continue allowing us to provide patient services such as patient financial aid and support groups. Our website is www.lightthenight.org/los if you'd like to register. And the honorable councilmen will be there on October 8th. Thank you. The festival begins at 5:00 p.m. in the evening. All walkers will get lit illuminated balloons, and cancer survivors carry white illuminated balloons. The actual walk will begin at 7:00 p.m.
Thank you. Thank you, Tally. Thank you, Peter. So we invite everyone, October 8th, to come out to Warner Center, 5:00. And there's a number of activities that'll take place prior to the walk. And again, I want to emphasize, it's not a marathon. Some people say, I can't go 2.8 miles. It's a very short distance, and it's a wonderful cause. So we thank you both for being here. And we're gonna take some photos in the back in just a couple minutes. Thank you. My next presentation is for Zeb Brady. Zeb? Come on up. I got a presentation here for Zeb Brady. Wonder, wonder person here. Zeb, say your first name.
Zarathousha.
Zarathousha. Zarathousha, also known as Zeb.
Yes.
Okay. Zeb Brady resides in Van Nuys with his mom and two sisters, currently a senior at Magnolia Science Academy in Reseda, which is in my district, public charter school for grades six to 12 with a curriculum that emphasizes science, math, and technology. He is two years younger than his classmates because he skipped two grades. Earned a gold medal in the 2006 International Mathematical Olympiad, most prestigious and challenging math competition in the world. He was the first and only Southern Californian out of six students on the United States National Team to represent the United States at the 2006 International Mathematical Olympiad over a dozen years. Over 500 students from 90-plus countries participated in the Olympiad. United States National Team ranked fifth team overall in the International Olympiad. Los Angeles and the community of Reseda congratulate you on this well-deserved accomplishment. Wish you continued growth and success in your education. How old are you, Zeb?
15.
15 years old. Let's hear it for Zeb Brady. National. Couple words from you.
Thank you for taking the time to recognize me. My experience in Slovenia was pretty awesome. I had a lot of fun. I look forward to doing similar things in the future.
Okay, Zeb.
Thanks.
Let's hear it once more time for a scholar. Thank you, Zeb.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce Mr. Reyes for our presentation.
Good morning. Almost, well, good day. We're close to noon time. But I want to thank my colleagues for allowing us to provide this presentation. I'm honored to be here to recognize Mr. Apollonio Rodriguez Jr., Assistant Chief with the United States National Forest for his dedication to working with the Aztec Fire Fuels Crew. And we have a very special reason for bringing him here today. Many of you may remember, a short time ago, that I had the honor of bringing a number of recent graduates of the Aztec Fire Crew. At that time, Mr. Rodriguez began working with crew participants while here in Los Angeles on a temporary assignment with the United States National Forest. As I noted to the council back then, not only were these young people looking for jobs, but they were looking for ways to be of service to others. Mr. Rodriguez was so moved by their commitment that he dedicated himself to helping prepare all crew participants for careers with the U.S. National Forest Service. Apollonio spent countless hours mentoring, coaching, and training them. The result? All graduating program participants landed jobs with the U.S. Forest Service, all of them. Let's please give them a round of applause. Since that time, the graduates that each of you met have been fighting fires in Los Padres, Cast... Padres, Castaic, and Altadena, just to name a few locations. In fact, with me today are some of those graduates who are on a brief break from firefighting and some of these fires we all have been hearing about. They are Alejandro Yepes, Daniel Cabran, Elizabeth Hara, Walter Alonso, Frank Cables, and Santo Gonzalez now here with us today. And the reason why they're here is that we're all here to say thank you to Apolonio. Apolonio has done exactly what I think we should be doing as a city, looking at our resources, looking at our tax dollars, evaluating our contracts, and seeing how we can bring our own City of L.A. tax dollars back into the communities and providing jobs for our young people. So I want to thank him for that initiative. And as we know, we come to a point where we train these young people, but without jobs, they ask themselves, "What's the point?" Apolonio made this a real triumph for all of them. So on behalf of the L.A. City Council, I thank you, Apolonio, and present the certificate of recognition to you for your dedication to the Fire Fuels Crew and for transforming the lives of young adults to serve the residents of Los Angeles. Muchas gracias, Apolonio. Thank you very much. I'd like to ask Apolonio for a few words, and then Enrique to share a few thoughts. Please.
I'd like to say thank you for this opportunity. Seems like we're getting a lot of credit. There was a lot of folks behind me, gained support from the chief officers, from Don Phazer, Don Garwood, Assistant Chief Jim Hall, Division Chief Willis Byerson, Center Manager Chris Armstrong. Without those folks in the background that really supported the plan we had to get them working and get them into jobs. One of the biggest accomplishments we've had within the Forest Service this year is bringing on the A.D. crews, which the Aztecs are part of. We have five of them. We have folks currently on hotshot crews, on helicopter crews, which takes additional training, working on engines as far north as the Indiano National Forest, working at BLM with different agencies, BLM, Bakersfield, to the east, to San Bernardino, and also here on the Angeles. One of the biggest accomplishments, if you hear, is scanner at nighttime. The voice of the Angeles National Forest through night dispatch is an Aztec, is Jessica, the one that talked to you when we first started here at the beginning of the season. That's quite an accomplishment, getting a person from the Aztecs working into our dispatch center. So it's easy for me to stand up here and try to take credit, but it's the hard work of the kids that are behind me. They're the ones, we open the doors, they go in, they're going in there to work hard, and then open the doors for the others. Of all the programs that I see going on, the Angeles National Forest partners with the L.A. City and the county, grab these folks from the inner city, get them jobs, it's a success and something to be proud of, and should be modeled in every city throughout California. I'd like to thank you guys for your support of the Aztecs. Enrique's done a great job bringing the folks together, so I'd like to thank him. I'd like to say thank you once again.
Thank you. Enrique?
Councilmember Labange. Just right before, Councilmember Labange wanted to say a quick word.
Mr. Reyes, thank you for bringing these distinguished people here this morning. I know some of them I see training from time to time in Griffin Park, running right up the trail from the Charlie Turner Trailhead. But I thank you, and the hard work that all of you do, and we don't know, but we're blessed with the four National Forests, the Angeles, Los Padres, San Bernardino, Cleveland, all within 45 minutes of where we stand right now, and you're out protecting it. I also want to remind everybody at 700 East Temple Street, not to steal federal employees from you, sir, but we're looking for great city firefighters, and there's opportunities with the City of Los Angeles. Fire Chief Ramontri wanted me to recall that, so be that part of the process. Thank you again. Congratulations for all your service.
Thank you, Tom.
Good morning. My name's Daniel, and I would like to thank the chief here, well, all three chiefs from the Angeles National Forest for providing us with opportunities that we haven't had. And it's a great feeling to be out there protecting the forest. And Enrique, for providing the program to get us there and pushing us. And I love doing what I do today, and it's a great feeling to be a wildland firefighter today.
Again, Enrique Hurtado, and I provide services. It's a gang and adventure program, but with a little twist, job training placement with the United States Forest Service. And today, I see many heroes here, Marines, Navy. But today, Chief Rodriguez is a hero, is the Aztec Fire Crew hero, because he promised something when he came down from Fresno, he said, "Enrique, your guys have a lot of potential. I'm going to get them jobs, I promise you, before I leave." And he did. He did keep his promise, so I really thank Chief Rodriguez for keeping his word and opening up the doors for citizens in Los Angeles, on their serve, and all we need is an opportunity.
Again, I just want to recognize our other two chiefs. You have Chief.
Mark Aguirre.
Mark Aguirre and Chief.
Will Spireson.
Will Spireson, working together with Chief Rodriguez. Thank you all for this moment. Thank you very much.
I'd like to recognize Councilmember Padilla for a very special introduction as well. We have the Mexican Consul General here and a very important guest, and we want to thank them for their patience, and it's an honor to have them here in chambers.
Good morning, colleagues. First of all, I want to thank our special guest and his delegation for their patience. I know the time has been running, but through the course of presentation, it gets to get a flavor for Los Angeles. But we indeed have a very special guest and group visiting with us this morning. Please welcome the Governor of the State of Nayarit, Governor Gonzales Sanchez, and his wife, Señora Maria de Rosario Mejía de González. And give them a round of applause. They are leading a delegation that consists of 20 delegates, Spanish delegados, 18 mayors, 18 alcaldes, 12 secretaries, 12 secretarios, and two representatives of the Federaciones Nayaritas here in California. They're here visiting on both business as well as an arts and cultural exchange, since there's an exhibit that's taking place both in Santa Ana, down in Orange County, and here in Los Angeles. And it's entitled Feria de Nayarit in California, basically a festival of Nayarit in California, which will culminate in an art exhibit. As many of you know, there's many people from Mexico, particularly the state of Nayarit in Los Angeles and throughout California, both recent immigrants and families that have been here for generations. Our countries and our states and our regions are very much intertwined, and we'd like to offer a very warm welcome to Governor Gonzales Sanchez and his delegation. Una cordial bienvenida al gobernador, la señora Maria de Rosario Mejía de González, y a toda la delegación de varios delegados, alcaldes, secretarios, y representantes de las federaciones nayaritas aquí en California. Como todo el mundo sabe, nuestros países, nuestros estados, y nuestras ciudades tienen varios lazos culturales históricos en términos de empresas y muchos más. Y nos da mucho gusto darles la bienvenida a nuestra ciudad de Los Ángeles, donde siempre tienen su casa. Y por favor, unas palabras de parte del gobernador. Please welcome for a few words Governor Gonzales Sanchez.
President Garcetti, councilmembers, amigas, amigas y amigos. Es un honor.
Friends?
Es un honor estar en el corazón del gobierno de la ciudad de Los Ángeles.
It's a great honor to be in the hearts of the people and the government that are represented in the city of Los Angeles.
Mucho es lo que nos vincula a la gente de Nayarit y de Los Ángeles.
There's a lot that ties the people from Nayarit to the people in Los Angeles.
Compartimos la misma casa.
We share the same home.
En la sala, en el comedor de una casa aquí en Los Ángeles.
In the living room and the dining room of a home here in Los Angeles.
En la sala, en el comedor de una casa allá en Nayarit.
In the living room and the dining room of a home there in Nayarit.
Los miembros de una misma familia platican.
The very members of a family sit and talk.
Sobre sus sueños.
Regarding their dreams.
Sobre sus ilusiones.
Regarding all the things that they want to dream about and what they want to accomplish, their goals.
Vivir en paz y en orden.
To live in peace and in a good serene order.
Y generando condiciones para la prosperidad.
And generating different conditions so that we may all prosper.
También nos vincula el intercambio comercial.
Also, we are tied together through our commercial entities.
Nosotros el Nayarit consumimos productos manufacturados en esta ciudad.
We, Nayarit, consume products that are manufactured in this city.
En esta ciudad se consumen muchos productos de origen primario del campo de Nayarit.
There are many products in this city that are consumed and purchased that come from the fields in Nayarit.
Y el vínculo más fuerte, más importante, más trascendente.
And the biggest tie that gets us together, that transcends everything.
Es una travesía que inicia en el puerto de San Blas, Nayarit.
Is something that comes from the port of San Blas in Nayarit.
Cuando en el mes de marzo de 1768.
When in the month of March in 1778.
Fray Junipero Serra sale de Nayarit para venir a evangelizar la alta California, hoy el estado de California.
Friar Serra, who came from Nayarit to California.
Junipero Serra.
Junipero Serra.
Y venimos entonces.
And we came at that time.
Del origen al destino.
From our origin to our destiny.
Con honor y agradecimiento.
With great.
A recibir el nombre del pueblo y el gobierno este reconocimiento.
And to receive the name of this city and to be recognized.
A la tarea que los nayaritas realizan en esta ciudad.
To do the work that is done by the people from Nayarit in the city.
A Alex Padilla.
Alex Padilla.
A todas y todos ustedes.
And to all of you, men and women.
El nombre de casi un millón de nayaritas. Gracias. Muchas gracias por este honor.
Thank you from a million of people from Nayarit.
Senor gobernador, de parte de mis colegas, el alcalde aquí de la ciudad de Los Ángeles, por favor, reciba esta proclamación en honor de su visita y de su delegación, y esperamos verlo aquí muy pronto de nuevo.
Thank you from the city and from the mayor of the city and the members of the assembly.
And just a quick thank you to the San Pedro Rotary Club, who had a delegation in Nayarit just last weekend, as we were celebrating El Grito here in Los Angeles, Los Angeles, Wilmington Rotary Club, I'm sorry. We were represented in Nayarit, which was led to assuring this visit not just to the Los Angeles, but to Los Angeles City Hall.
Thank you very much, Mr. Padilla. Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Cardiniss Grohan, Luisa Labange, Padilla Parks, Perry Reyes, Rose Nelson Smith, Weiss Weston, Zine Garcetti, 14 members present. In a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Weiss moves, and Mr. Smith seconds. If there's no objection, those will be unanimously approved. Next order of business.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Zine moves, and Mr. Smith seconds. If there's no objection, those two will be unanimously approved. If we can run through the agenda next.
First items on the agenda are items noticed for public hearings, items one through seven, and the recommendation for council action would be to open the public hearing and continue the hearings and ordinances to October 13th.
Okay, we will open those and continue them if there's no objection until the 13th of October. Next item, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items eight through 12. On item number eight, that is the commissioner, do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, please.
And item number nine, the committee report has been submitted to council.
Okay, we'll move that committee report. And if there's anybody wishing to call any of those special, nine through 12, please let us know. Yes, Mr. Parks?
Technical amendment on instruction that wasn't on the report.
We'll hold that on table. Nine through 11, colleagues. Anybody wishing to call special? If not, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, Swiss.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 13 through 51. 10 votes are required for consideration. And there's a substitute motion that has been distributed on item number 27.
Okay. 13 through?
51.
51, colleagues. Specials, Mr. Zine? 44, special for Mr. Zine. Mr. Parks? 45 for Mr. Parks. We have cards on 40. We have cards on 27. Cards on 30. We have cards on 35. And we have cards on 42. And on 48 and 50. Are there specials, colleagues? If not, let's open the roll on the balance, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next item, Mr. President, on the continuation agenda is item number 52, and that is also an item for which public hearing has not been held.
Okay, we will then open and close the public hearing on that. I see no cards. Mr. Weiss, does it call that special? Next items.
That would conclude the regular meeting. Do you wish to recess and go into the special meeting?
Please call the roll for the special meeting.
Cardiniss Grohan, Luisa Labange, Padilla Parks, Perry Reyes, Rose Nelson Smith, Weiss Weston, Zine Garcetti, 14 members present.
Okay, which items, please?
The items on the special meeting are both items for which public hearings have not been held, and I believe there is a card on item number one.
Okay, we'll call that in special. And item two, anybody wishing to call special? If not, let's open the roll on item number two, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved.
Mr. President, while your council is in the special meeting, do you wish to take that up at this time, or do you wish to continue that to the regular?
Yes, please. Let's continue that back into the regular meeting, I'm sorry. Also, we'll combine those two in the regular meeting. Before we do public comment, let's take the commissioner, who's been very patient waiting here, and then we'll go item 52, and then we'll take public comment after that. Okay? Item number eight.
That's confirmation of Mr. Luis Alfaro to El Pueblo, and the committee report recommends
All righty, if we can ask the nominee to come forward, please. Do we have the nominee here? I'd like to recognize Mr. Labange, if he is available to speak on El Pueblo nominee.
Great appointee, recommended by Mayor Villarogosa, someone who grew up in the community right here in the heart of Los Angeles, went to school on the east side. Mr. Luis Alfaro, would you please say a few words?
Good morning, everyone. My name is Luis Alfaro, and I was born and raised here in downtown Los Angeles in Pico Union, and I'm pleased to be here. I'm humbled and honored to be asked by the mayor to serve as a commissioner for the El Pueblo Housing Authority. I am an artist, and my life's calling has been to do community work. I spent 10 years at the Music Center as the organizer of new play development, which meant that I worked with young people of color, bringing them into the American theater and the regional theaters. And now I work at USC and California Institute of the Arts, and I work on bringing theaters. And now I work at USC and California Institute of the Arts, and I work on bringing the community into the academy. So I hope that qualifies me in some way.
It does, and your reputation speaks for itself, and I want to thank you, Ms. Alfaro, for putting yourself forward for service, and thank you for all the contributions you've made, and that with this vote you'll continue to make. So with that, let's open the roll on the nomination, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That is approved. Congratulations, Commissioner.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Please give him a round of applause. Thank you. Like to, we have a request to take fifty-two out of order. If there's no objection, we will next take number fifty-two, and I'd like to recognize Mr. Weiss.
Mr. President, colleagues, we're going to hear a state-of-the-bay report today and a state of the city's compliance with its legal TMDL requirements. I'd like to ask the folks who are here for their presentations to come forward, Sharam Karagami, Adele Hajkalil from the Bureau of Sanitation, also Tracy Agoscu is here, and Mark Gold, Tracy from Santa Monica Baykeeper, and Mark from Heal the Bay. If you guys could please come forward and also have a seat at the table. Very briefly, colleagues, as an intro, and then we're going to hear from the specialists at the table. Also present with us and at the table, if and when, and only if she wants to, is Commissioner Paula Daniels, who, you're welcome to sit wherever you want, and sit there, and then you may have things you want to say. Please come forward, Paula. I've had the privilege of serving as the chair of a state agency called the Santa Monica Bay Restoration Commission. Mr. Rosendahl is an appointee, is a member of the commission, and all of us have participated over the past several years, both through the drafting and the enactment of Measure O, and through the various lawsuits that the city has been entangled in, in trying to get the city on the right path towards compliance with federal clean water guidelines, mandates, and in particular with the TMDL regulations. The bureau has prepared a report on the city's compliance with the TMDLs. We're going to hear the bureau present its perspective on the issue first. Then we're going to hear Ms. Agoscu, who is the Santa Monica Baykeeper, and Mark Gold, who is the director, executive director, whatever, Director General of Heal the Bay, present their perspective as well. This is, you might think we would be doing a state-of-the-bay discussion in the summer when people go to the beach, but when the rubber meets the road, or when the trash meets the ocean, rather, is when the rainy season occurs. That's what we're heading into in the next several months, and so it is particularly appropriate before the city gets there, before you start seeing those images on TV of the sludge piling up in Santa Monica Bay, that we hear from the experts and try to redouble the city's efforts to comply. So I turn it over to the bureau and to Tracy and to Mark.
Thank you so much, councilmember. Sharam Karagani, Bureau of Sanitation. I provide you a brief summary of the two TMDLs. One is trash TMDL, that the deadline of the trash TMDL for Los Angeles River and Biona Creek is September 30th of 2006. To date, we have installed 9,741 catch basin insert with five-millimeter openings. We have also installed 7,350 catch basin opening covers, three CDS units, four, three vortex units, and eight netting system. A combination of these technologies have the city in compliance with the trash TMDL deadline, and we have a report that we would be sending to Regional Board on September 30, 2006. On the bacteria TMDL for Santa Monica Bay, City of Los Angeles in conjunction with the County of Los Angeles and City of Santa Monica, we have 21 low-floor diversions that are operating along the beach. Eight of those 20 low-floor diversion belong to City of Los Angeles, constructed and operated, and I'm happy to inform you that as of July 15, 2006, all the eight have been operating well, and as a result of that, the bacteria counts at the beaches have gone down. I am working closely with Mr. Mark Gold and also Tracy and others to work on the metals TMDLs that are upcoming, both for Los Angeles River and Bona Creek. As a part of the TMDL, we are also working closely on the Proposition O, and I reported on that, that we have 21 projects that we are currently working that would help reduce or mitigate some of our TMDLs issues. That's a brief discussion of those three things. I would be glad to respond to any comment or questions that anyone may have.
Mr. Weiss?
My name's Dr. Mark Gold, Executive Director of Heal the Bay. A couple issues. On beaches, just to confirm what Sharam was talking about, as you know, we do our beach report card for the entire state of California, more than 450 beaches, and the good news on water quality, especially since the July 15 deadline in the city of LA, there's been very few exceedances, only a couple, and spread over a couple of different locations. The only chronic area is Dockweiler near Biona Creek. As you know, Biona Creek is a much, much more difficult water quality problem to solve, but all the individual diversions, most of the bugs have been worked out of them. You know, obviously, the fact that the city got a jump on this many years ago, they did their first diversion back in the mid-'90s at the Pico Kenner Drain, and it seems as if it's really paid off this year, just in time for the July 15 deadline. So that's, I think, exemplary news overall for the millions of people who enjoy Santa Monica Bay beaches in the city of Los Angeles. Recently, just last Thursday, a historic vote was made by the Regional Water Quality Control Board on actually putting the dry-weather beach water quality standards into the LA County Stormwater Permit, so now it is absolutely an enforceable permit in the city of LA that was pretty much looking pretty good for compliance, other than that one area near Biona, which is a, there's a separate total maximum daily load for Biona Creek as well. That is a big priority for the city. I think the city deserves kudos on the trash side. Obviously, the numbers that you heard were very, very impressive. They work closely with the Proposition O Citizens Advisory Committee in trying to get funds, basically streamline, getting it into the city system as soon as possible so that those inserts could be put at the catch basins. I think that's a very big positive that's occurred as well. On Proposition O, Heal the Bay, Santa Monica Baykeeper and the National Resources Defense Council, we wrote a pretty critical letter of Proposition O that we sent to the mayor a couple of months ago, and we've seen the city move forward on many of those recommendations. There's now a staffer actually in the mayor's office working on water quality issues, focusing a lot on Prop O. And one of the other critical parts of this is working hopefully with the whole city family in trying to combine what needs to be done strategically with the overall strategic plan on Proposition O for TMDLs and incorporating the IRP, which all really need to work together to be effective, to really solve our water quality problems, our water supply problems, and our stormwater pollution problems within Los Angeles. So look for that within the next month or so, coming out of the mayor's office, and very, very critical. On Proposition O, I'd be more than willing to answer any questions that anybody has on that. As you know, we've been very, very involved in that as members of the COAC. I, too, have been troubled by the pace. I know that's been a big issue in front of this council, but at the same time, I'd have to say that a lot of the mistakes that might have been made the first time around are being rectified before the second round, and this takes time. We got to make sure that these dollars are being spent in the most cost-effective manner, and that's one of the reasons why the deliberations have been as slow as they have, because we don't, we want to make sure that the money's not being wasted. That's actually going to end up in improving water quality and water supply within the Los Angeles area. And then just in closing, Jack Weiss has been Chair of the Bay Restoration Commission, Tracy Agoscu is a vice chair, myself is a vice chair, and then in addition, David Nahai, who's on your DWP Commission, is also a vice chair of the Bay Commission. So you have a lot of friends on that commission, and their goal is to implement the Bay Restoration Plan, and there's a lot that needs to get done to implement that plan that's well beyond stormwater and TMDLs. And one thing that I would just strongly encourage the city to really take up to the next level is when the next funding cycle comes around, is to take the grant-writing process very, very seriously and in a strategic manner, to make sure that it's implementing a lot of the goals to meet water quality standards, as well as meet some of the other environmental goals for the city and the Bay Restoration Commission. One of the things that is critical, and I know it's a plug that might be inappropriate for other folks here, but Proposition 84 will provide substantial funding to the Bay Restoration Commission to implement the Bay Restoration Plan, well over $25 million, and could be much more than that. And that's something, it also helps implement the integrated watershed management approach for LA County, and so that's critical for an outside funding source so the city of LA doesn't have to rely strictly on their own funds to implement these programs and projects, but getting some state assistance as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Before calling on Mr. Rosendahl, we can just pause for one quick sec. There's one other thing that was resolved. If we, the cards were withdrawn from item fifty, oh, special one, I'm sorry, special one, from special one. Can we just take that up for the vote on consent? And then we'll return to Mr. Rosendahl or anybody else from the table, and then Mr. Rosendahl and Ms. Gruehl. But on special one, open the roll? We continued it into, yeah, okay. We're just going to pull it up on the computer. Sorry, folks. We'll be right back with that. They withdrew, on special one, they withdrew the cards. We're coming back to this item in just one second. We're just holding it on the table for about 10 seconds. Can open the roll? Oh, Mr. Labange?
We're switching. I didn't hear that. I was over with the.
Special one? Okay, there was a time issue with that, but had a request on that, so we can put it aside then for now. We'll go back to it if anybody from the table likes to return, and then Mr. Rosendahl is our next speaker.
I have some questions for the table.
Sure. We have Mr. Rosendahl's next, then Ms. Gruehl. We're not going to do it. We're going to go back to the table.
I think I, I, I have one minute left. I do want to ask them a question.
Oh, sure, absolutely. Then Mr. Weiss on his side. Ms. Agoscu.
Before Tracy speaks, Tracy and I, Adele Hajkalil with the Bureau of Sanitation, I want to just, one of the reasons I'm here on the table is I'm managing the implementation of the settlement agreement that the council approved here back in 2004 for the sewer system. Upgrading our sewer system is one of the key elements to protecting our water quality, and that's another element. And also managing the Integrated Resource Plan that Mark mentioned, which is coming before your council, hopefully next month, for implementation, for approval of the certification of the final AIR, and also for approving of the implementation strategy that will set the path for the future and improve on the water quality and improving and providing safer, healthier neighborhoods. You know, the Bureau of Sanitation provides itself of being environmental leaders. We work closely with our partners and comply with all our agreements and requirements and with the community, and we responsibly address and meet these compliance requirements. One of them is the settlement agreement. We have entered the third year, and we have prepared an annual report that you should have a copy before you that sets great results, and Tracy will highlight some of them. But also, what we have provided you a kind of a brief overview of the Bureau's, Bureau of Sanitation's efforts in improving the water quality, improving the environment, and setting the future for a sustainable city that we can all be proud of. And it'll be, if you take a moment sometime in the future and looking at the handouts that you have, and the information is available. Here at glance, it's a great summary of the accomplishments that we've made in the Bureau in all the areas. It's available for the community and the members at lacity.org-san, and you can download the information. But many of the workers that clean sewers every day, the inspectors that inspect sewers, we have inspectors that inspect restaurants for grease control, all of these have made a big difference in addressing sewer overflows, which is a major issue that was before council back in 2004, and the results have been great. Things are improving, and we're seeing great results, more than 70% reduction. And that goes to the support that we have from the council, but also with the partnership that we have with our partners here and with the community. With that, I'll turn it over to Tracy, too.
Thank you, Adele, and I know it's been a long day. Tracy Agoscu, Santa Monica Baykeeper. I'd like to thank the councilmembers, Weiss and Gruehl, for this motion, and the opportunity to thank the city of Los Angeles for the support of this settlement agreement. In 2001, the city enjoyed over 600 spills of raw sewage. With this massive capital improvement project that you have undertaken, you spent $231 million last year. You're projected to spend $379 million this year, over half of which will go to the collection system, and you have brought yourself down to about 200 spills per year from a high of over almost 700. So I'd like to congratulate you, let you know how happy I am to be here, to tell you of this good news, and I'm going to open it up. Thanks.
Mr. Karagani? Do you want to say a few words?
I'm sorry?
Are you going to say a few words?
No, no, I did say.
Okay, that's fine. Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, Madam President. I guess I would just ask you guys the following question. Because usually, oftentimes, when the TMDL issue has arisen in council, it's arisen because there's been a controversy, there's been, there's been a lawsuit, or there's a question with the permit, or there's questions about funding for the projects under Prop O, and there've been different sorts of controversies, and I think we all want to avoid them in the future. I mean, we want to see all of you sitting at the table, nodding your heads and agreeing, which is, by the way, not your job, because the two of you have the job to carry out the city's policy, whatever it is, and the two of you independently have the job to call the city on it every day and to keep the government honest. But it's better to anticipate the problems nonetheless. So just looking into your crystal ball over, say, the next year, what do you think are sort of the crunch issues that will face, that'll provide decision-makers with difficult choices over the course of the next year? And just how do you see those developing?
I think there's a, there's a couple that come up. One is, there's going to be the stormwater permit for Los Angeles County for 2007, and that has the potential of being a very controversial issue. The city of Los Angeles has been very supportive, but a lot of your colleagues surrounding the city have been less than cooperative and end up taking, you know, they're still suing over the 1990, I mean, the 2001 stormwater permit, and so that's a big issue. The other thing is, is just making sure that there's a coordinated strategic plan for complying with these TMDLs is something that's just absolutely critical. It's just dealing with everything on a project-by-project basis, or even on an individual TMDL-by-TMDL basis, is going to be a recipe for waste and noncompliance. It's just something that the city needs to really put a big focus on doing that, and that, I think, is a tremendous challenge, because, let's be honest, it's not, it's not like rebuilding the sewer system or rebuilding the sewage treatment plant, something that the city has extensive experience in. This is something that's new, it's different, and is going to require a wide variety of individual projects, as well as significant changes in ordinances on how water quality is being dealt with within the city of LA, and that's going to take a lot of creative thought.
I think that the challenge that the city has is to continue to distinguish itself from county and other cities who do not comply with water quality regulations, do not invest as the city does, but instead fights it in court and pays their lawyers to fight it. And I think that that is going to be a challenge, coming first with the stormwater permit, and followed thereafter with the new version of the trash TMDL. As you know, it is, court has deemed it invalid and void. It will be coming back to the Regional Board, so to have this city show its support and continued support, just as they did last Thursday for the bacteria TMDL and the stormwater permit.
As far as the stormwater is concerned, yes, we are working on a strategic, we are working on a strategic plan for the four watershed, and obviously, we would have everyone input in the process as we are going to develop those master plan. One would be for Los Angeles River with all the TMDLs that it has, and then one for Biona Creek, one for Dominguez Channel, and one for Santa Monica, and everyone would be involved. And as far as the permit, we are looking forward to work again with all of our friends to make sure the permit is a permit that all of us, you know, be proud of and achieve water quality.
From my perspective, on the integrated plan that's going to be coming before you in October, the biggest challenge is the implementation. It requires some changes in ordinances and policies for the city to implement to become leaders and set the future for capture of. leaders and set the future for capture of stormwater on private properties, more infiltration, pushing the conservation and water recycling to the next level. Those are big policy decisions and changes in ordinances that will come before you over the next year or two years, and the implementation strategy will be coming to you next month. Those will be going to be tough challenges to move forward with.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weiss. Our next speaker is Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I want to thank Mr. Weiss for his leadership on the Santa Monica Bay Restoration Commission, and the fact that we did some politics to get a seat for the 11th District, and I appreciate that. Gives me an opportunity to weigh in on it, since the coastal district, which is what mine is, has the coast, and of course Janus Han has the coast too at the harbor, but the bay, for all of us, is critical. I want to also say, Tracy and Mark, your leadership in the community is greatly appreciated by me and by the community, and I have with me Deborah Weinstein, who I hired as my environmental deputy. Come on over, Deborah, she can be on camera for a second, because she's a professional at this, and she helps me understand what I need to do as an elected official. The more empowered I am, the more I understand the issue, the better I can act in behalf of the public, and she's helping me do that. So I just wanted to make that formal introduction. Propo, about $85 million has been spent, is that right, Mark?
I don't think it's quite that high. I think we're at about 54, something like that.
Okay, and again, question, give us the, what we learn, lessons learned, and what we need to do in the future on Propo.
Gladly. The biggest thing is that-
Hold my time, please.
The biggest issue is the fact that the criteria that were actually used to judge individual projects ended up being practically useless. They were completely subjective, they weren't quantitative, and as a result, in essence, every single project proposal, 52, 54 of them probably at this point, had to be gone over with a fine-tooth comb and discussed at length in front of the COAC, and that is not a quick and effective process.
What should we do going forward?
So the big thing is, is before the next round, what you're going to see is a new set of criteria that's going to be quantitative. Hopefully, it'll be largely based on what the environmental community recommended two-plus years ago, from lessons that we've all learned in other funding arenas. And so from, so hopefully, we're going to move these projects out of the subjective arena and put it more from the standpoint of implementing what needs to be implemented, which is improving water quality, augmenting water supply, helping flood control, but mostly water quality is number one within the Los Angeles area. And I think that's going to make a very big difference, but that's where this plan, in coordination with the IRP, I should also add the LA River Revitalization Effort, is absolutely critical. We can't have these things going in different directions at the same time.
Tracy, do you want to add to that, any comment about that?
I have been extremely frustrated as a non-member of the COAC with Propo. I attended as many meetings as possible with my schedule and my pregnancy. I found that there were a lot of projects that absolutely were not fulfilling the mission of Propo for clean water, and as an original organization that endorsed Propo, worked hard to raise money for Propo, and continues to support it in the outside community, it's one thing that Mark does not discuss, that we take hits, to use the vernacular, from our cohorts in the environmental movement, because we do endorse Propo. And so I'm very happy to see that the mayor's leadership on changing Propo moving forward, and I really do hope to see the son or daughter of Propo, and that's what I'm trying to work for, another $500 million to help clean up the LA River and the harbor and the bay.
Jamie, you want to comment on the spill in the Culver City sewage thing? I was at a meeting yesterday, I'm a member of the COG, which is Beverly Hills West Hollywood, Santa Monica, and Culver City, and they brought it up to me as an issue, and it goes back to Mark, your comment about coordination of all the cities, all the counties, everybody's going to be on the same wavelength. Do we have a reaction to where Culver City and what that spill was about?
I'm going to let Adele speak to it. It was not a City of LA pump station, first of all. That's, I think, the most important. But one thing from an environmental, community perspective is that to not have the notice and the awareness of what was going on until we did was completely abysmal, but I'm sure Adele has something to say.
Thank you so much for that.
The spill, I think you're referring to, occurred in the City of Culver City-
That's correct.
-in a pumping station that had failed. The City of Los Angeles has invested a lot of money over the last 15 to 20 years in bringing our pump stations, we have about 48 of them in the city, to the higher level and to provide redundancy, both mechanical, electrical, to ensure that our pumps always are available, and because we understand the importance of these pump stations and how vulnerable they are. One thing that we're going to be doing, hopefully, is working together with the neighbor agencies to start coordinating activities, learning from each other. Next week, we're having a benchmarking meeting on sewer systems that we're going to be talking about, learning from each other. We'll be supporting cities such as Culver City and taking the extra step, and, but the assurance is that our system is in good shape, and hopefully we can help others in improving their system similar to what we've done.
Thank you for that.
I would just echo, though, what Tracy said, which is, the public notification on these spills has just been really embarrassing in the last-
Whose responsibility is that, and whose fault?
It's whichever city that's caused the spill. They're supposed to notify the Health Department, notify the Regional Board immediately, and the excuse that we hear way too often is that, oh, we're too busy trying to stop the spill. Like, it's too hard to pick up a cellphone and call everyone to protect public health. And that's something that just has to change, and there needs to be way more coordination on that throughout the region. The county of all people, which Tracy and I had a significant laugh on, had a motion before them earlier in the week, basically threatening fines to individual cities for not notifying the Health Department quick enough. I mean, the irony can't be lost here, but it does show you how serious a problem it has become that the Board of Supervisors even brought it up.
Well, I appreciate everybody here, and just for full disclosure, both Tracy and Mark are on my environmental cabinet with Fran Diamond as well, working closely with my office on the issues that directly impact our wetlands and directly impact the ocean. And I just want to thank you all again for your contribution to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Ms. Gruel is our next speaker.
Thank you, and Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Weiss asked a lot of my questions, so I will be brief. I know Propo, the project evaluation criteria gives different weight, 40% for water quality, 30% for multiple objectives, and project readiness gets 30%. Have these worked? I mean, as part of what you're reviewing is if these criteria are the same ones we should move forward on? Are there changes? Is that, is that flexible? I know one of the things we talked about in committee was the concern on some of the projects that came forward, were they, how were they really going to impact TMDLs, to go back to the real reason that we have this and how it relates? Because we all have projects we'd like to see done that have some, some relationship to TMDLs, but what's going to get us the maximum that is going to deal with that?
There's been a subcommittee of the COAC that has met with Sharon-
Hold my time, sorry.
That has met with Sharon, and we've gone over some recommendations on the criteria. The first thing is, is that no, that a project at a minimum has to have a significant measurable water quality benefit, or else it's not eligible. So that, that's just right off the bat. And then the next step is that there's going to be a wide variety of categories, so it's not just project readiness, but project readiness would be broken up into, you know, four or five quantitative categories. Water quality would be broken down into about 10 different categories, where specific technical questions would have to be answered as part of the application process, or else it just doesn't get judged. And one of the big problems, and I worked with, with city staff on this as well, was that they were using the old criteria, which was intentionally ambiguous, to provide, in theory, greater flexibility. The end result was, the criteria got thrown out. They just, they were completely unusable. They were so subjective and so ambiguous. And so those are the sorts of changes that you're going to see, that I think is going to create a far more certainty in the process, and most importantly, more accountability on how the dollars are being spent.
And are there, as you've been reviewing this and after our first year, have we been looking at other best practices and other places that we would add, you know, kind of change the system in which we've done this, how we've done this, or feel that you're, that's been evolving throughout this, is changing some of the criteria and so forth?
Let's try to answer that one. Yeah, but-
Are you referring to specific best management practices, or how to manage the Proposition O?
I think it's more of how we evaluate what we've done and as we move forward. I mean, is there, do you have an evaluative component?
The answer is yes, obviously. We have experience off of the different bonds that we have, we have, you know, had in the past, and we also have access to other places throughout the nation, you know, that they have done similar things. So we have that, and that, what Mark was indicating was that the proposed or the new project selection criteria and the process itself, because there was just, one was a structural issue, one was a process issue. Together is what we are hoping to improve the process.
One thing, one thing briefly I'd like to add is that UCLA just completed an independent study, an evaluation of the first year of implementation with recommendations for round two. And so that was done independently from, from the UCLA Institute of the Environment, and so that's available now for, for people to peruse.
Great. Obviously, I mean, I would assume that the committee and the staff are going to look at those and see where some recommendations that might make us move forward. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I want to say thank you to all the participants. I know we've played an incredible role, and we're making a difference, as given by the statistics that have been cited already. My question really is to all, each one of you, and hopefully get a response. As we go forward on the River Master Plan, and we look at the definition of what is a TMDL, and how we look to intervene in making our bodies of water healthier, how do you see us being able to leverage that priority so we can create a quality of life where we can dissuade and begin to condition people's behavior so that they are not throwing trash into our streets, are not throwing the plastic bags into riverways? Do you see us, given the dollars that are on the table, being able to leverage that fund to create those types of environments, being innovative and creative, and lessening the stress and pressures of very dense areas where you have very hot, red hotspots of trash and debris? Can each one of you address that, please, and hold my time?
Well, I, I think what the city has been doing and where they've been placing their, their best management practices of trash excluders and catch basin inserts has been tied to work that they've done over the years in identifying those hotspots. And so that's not on the behavioral side. As you know, Propo dollars have to be used for structural best management practices. They can't be used for educational purposes. That's been reaffirmed by the city attorney's office even just this week. And so from that standpoint, really, the behavioral challenge really falls to all of us outside of Proposition O or individual groups and the like. One of the things I thought you were going to get to, because I know obviously your work on the LA River Revitalization Effort, one of the things that we've been missing in application is putting in multi-use projects along the LA River that, Taylor Yards obviously is the poster child for this, but that was before Proposition O, but other projects that are going to provide a combination of water quality benefit by infiltrating runoff and maybe even providing some habitat, but also providing recreational opportunities for, for people along the LA River, as, and we all know how underparked those communities are. And we have yet to see those sorts of projects along the LA River, and we really hope before round two, with the near completion of the LA River Revitalization Plan, we'll start to see a couple of those sorts of projects.
Do you think that's a result of our complexity in our criteria? Is there a way to start re-framing our criteria so we can get to those types of goals and objectives that you just cited?
I think, I think as long as there's coordination within, within public works, that they'll inform each other so that the, that there are going to be those sorts of proposals. I think the criteria that we're changing will be well appreciated by the people working on this from the Bureau of Engineering. They'll know what to, what to come out of those sorts of projects and how to, how to recommend them, so I think it'll actually help in the long run.
Thank you.
Besides the use of technology, obviously, councilmember, we are also working on a couple of motions that you have introduced, both plastic and the polystyrene motion. I think they would also help to go a long way regarding the trash. And of course, last but not least, the third prong of our approach is the enforcement that Councilmember Lavange has mentioned, that as far as, you know, ticketing people that are chronic trashers, you know.
Thanks.
I want to first thank the council member for his leadership on the Los Angeles River as a user of the river down and near the estuary. I definitely appreciate your leadership on this issue, and I want to answer your question with the, with a story, a very brief one. The Bay Keeper has a hotline, and I received a call about a year and a half ago of what a homeowner in East LA thought was a sewage spill. And I showed up to her house, she's lived there, her family, her extended family has lived there for over 100 years, and she pointed me to a storm drain in front of her home that she was, of firm belief, was flowing with raw sewage. And I stood over it, it took me about two seconds, and I said, "That's the LA River that you smell." And we walked, and we found the river. And I believe that the work, if done correctly, that brings the community resource back to the community and lets them go and smell and appreciate the river in whatever form it is, whether it's through enforcement, whether it's through catch basin inserts, will bring this community to the, to an expectation of themselves that they are the stewards. And that is the very mission of Bay Keeper, it's what we try to do, and that's why we applaud the city for their work on the LA River, and it is also why we work so hard on the TMDLs and the permit for the river.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
One of the things that probably, like Mark said, is multi-benefits. We need to stress multi-benefits. If we develop a park, we should look at a park that provides stormwater management. If we're building a new school, we should look at a school that can represent, for example, the one next to the LA River. It should be a great lab for the river, and people should, should reflect the river. We should be able to capture stormwater, apply conservation measures, use recycled water. All these multi-benefits are things that we should work together. That's how we, we can leverage our money, our funds, plus also changing the codes and the requirements for development. And certain areas require certain things to be done. So as the city is being developed and redeveloped, things are being done that would meet our future and what we need to do. And that's things that we'll see in the IRP recommendations that are coming forth that are being done in coordination with the master plan.
And I appreciate that, and I know I've gone over my time, but I just want to end by saying this, that Lupe Vela from my office and Jill Soria have been working hard to bring the plastic bag industry to a level where they're accountable for their role in how we are polluting, contaminating our environment. But I also see that we can take a stronger advantage of the Ad Hoc River Committee to perhaps bring in the school district and bring in Hill the Bay and the other advocates with our city family and talk about these plans that are being designed now before they start sticking money, I mean, with, with all their construction schedules. They start and they say, "I'm sorry, we got going, too expensive, we can't do this." But if we can get in the front end of their construction process, should I say better, the design process before they get to construction, we can fold in the features that we were able to fold in back when we did Taylor Yard and Industrial Park and all that other good stuff. So I'm hoping we can work together and tighten our communication, perhaps with the Ad Hoc River Committee as a vehicle to share this information and influence those decisions before they get built. Thank you very much for your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Our next speaker is Mr. Lavange.
Tracy and Mark, nice to see you again, and Sharon, very good to see you, and Adele Khajali, it's always great to see you and the great job that you're doing trying to shepherd this here. I just wanted to stand, because I was driving in today, members, and I was thinking about trash in the streets. And I thought about, you know how we have a city forester? There's someone who's a city forester, we have a city architect, you know? We've got to have a city street cleaner. You know, one person who has that honorable job to say, "I'm in charge of making sure the streets are clean," so that they effectively push the issue, which makes it easier. I just returned during the recess from our sister city of Berlin, and their number one problem they have in their environment of their urban area, among other problems, is water runoff into the rivers from the city streets, which is similar, and I thought about all of you and the work that you do, and I'm going to try to put you together when they come as a delegation in March to learn about it. But I would just like to ask that somehow we get street services at your table, because I hear the discussion, and it's the discussion on down the line in the river, on down the line in the ocean, in the bay. I want to start in the neighborhood at the curb, right in front, and it's so disappointing to see it. Anybody got any ideas on that?
Actually, councilmember, we are working because of the trash TMDL technology that we are putting against our catch basin opening, the trash are going to stay on the street. I have been working closely with Mr. Robertson and also Nazaria from Andron Olive, Bureau of Street Services, to make sure we change our scheduling of our street sweeping to make sure that the hotspots that I have put technology, the trash is not going to stay- make sure that the hotspots that I have put technology, the trash is not going to stay on the street and be watched by everyone. So we have been working together.
And I see the drains now, they're clustered of a lot of litter. And it's not bad right now, but once the rains come, they will cause a flooding at that particular quarter. And then we need a little vacuum truck to go by and boom, boom, pick it up just like that. So it'd be real important. And the next thing, which is most important, and I think, and I know, Mr. Reyes, your passion, but to me, the number one issue of the Los Angeles River is putting water back in the river, is putting water back in the river and putting check dams, which there was a check dam right off of Forest Lawn Drive near Griffith Park for years. That water power would then use the water to spread and they pump back in to regenerate. Well, that's not happening because of the challenges, but we should have check dams at various points between April and November before the rainy seasons, because it's the water that makes the river. Whatever we say, it's got to be water. And I know I spent a lot of time on the Sixth Street Bridge and overlooking the city. It's one of my favorite spots when I take someone from City Hall. But to know that you could put a check dam, what's the possibility to put a check dam in the Los Angeles sector of the river at certain points?
That's a rubber dam, right?
Rubber dam, check dam.
If all the permitting issues are from Corps of Engineer, County of Los Angeles are granted, we are actually experimenting an inflatable dam in our Santa Monica Open Channel, which is also--
That won one in the Los Angeles River.
No, I understand, but it is really--
Okay, so I'm going to put a motion to direct you to do that. And I'll go talk to the Army Corps and make sure we could look at that. Ed?
Just a point of information. We are studying the hydrology of the river system.
Right.
What we're trying to define exactly where we can put the rubber dams, we're trying to identify them in such a way where we can complement our historic bridges, create new neighborhood gateways. But the main feature would be to enhance our capacity to lower the contaminants using the stormwater harvesting technologies that are out there. So we are focused on the, on the check dams, rubber dams. We want to make sure we do it within the systems approach so that we don't penalize either the northern part of the river or, or the beach areas to do it within the process that we actually are lowering our TMDLs and meet our objectives while creating these great new venues that many other cities have been able to essentially celebrate. So I agree with you 100%. We're trying to get to it as soon as possible, as quick as possible. Army Corps is there. They've been very enthusiastic. And as long as we keep in line with our obligations to environment, lowering TMDLs, I think we will do it.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Thank each and every one of you. And Adele, again, thank you for your work on the project, all of you. And Public Works Commissioner Daniels, who's here along with the team from Public Works. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. LaBange. And I believe our final speaker on this item will be Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, colleagues, and thank you especially to the Department and Santa Monica Baykeeper and Hill the Bay for the work that you guys are doing. Sometime, and you know, and sometimes you sue, and more often than not, when you sue, I support your efforts. In fact, I think I have every single time. Because I think you're absolutely right to be impatient. And it's not a personal thing when they get impatient at all. They're committed to this issue. And when they bring a suit, they have tools available to them that frankly you don't, because you are limited by what city policy is, what the city resources are. And I think you understand that. But I really want to thank all of you for the presentation you put on today. I just want to leave you with two notes. One is something that I'm very passionate about, and I want to thank you in advance for what you've done. And thank you, Paula, for what you've already done. Would like to move towards the creation of a stream protection ordinance in the, in the urban watershed, in the city itself. I think that's something that we, we could be very proud of. I think it's something that we can accomplish and can accomplish together. And I know that Commissioner Daniels has taken a particular interest in this, as have all of you. And hopefully, that's something we can look forward to in the not-too-distant future. The second thing, just to the department, I would note, you know, I've seen this as Chair of the Commission, Mr. Rosendahl has seen this as a member of the Commission. A lot of other entities are more aggressive than the city of L.A. when it comes to grants, okay? Including grant applications to the Santa Monica Bay Restoration Commission. I mean, I ask you, Mark, I mean, how many times have we seen applications from the city of Malibu in the past year or two?
Too many.
Because they're working it. They're working it. And we voted on grants for other cities. I don't, I don't recall a city of L.A. grant, at least it's not, it's not in the front lobe of my memory. And I know you've got your hands full, but there are funding opportunities out there. The Commission is just the most obvious one that I know about, and I really can't encourage you strongly enough to be more aggressive in going after those funds.
And I think leveraging Prop O, I mean, the fact that the city has really taken national leadership on Prop O in providing funding locally and, and making sure that the folks up in Sacramento know so that they're, they're matching the funds. I mean, I look at something like Sun Valley and the fact that I'm not seeing the state offer one-third of those funds, you know, you guys are paying half, the county's paying half, and you know, where's the state? That sort of political activity needs to occur on the grants as well, is to make sure that you guys are, are getting your fair share of the state funds at the same time.
Good point. Thank you all for a very good presentation this morning and this afternoon. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. All right, Madam Plurk, there's no further speakers on the queue. Would you please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote?
Twelve ayes.
Next item, please.
Madam President, did you wish to take a public comment at this time?
Yes, that would be fine. Let me pull out the speaker cards. And our first speaker today will be Mr. Don Garza. Two minutes for each speaker, please.
It's good to see you here today, Mr. LaBange. Is this thing on? Good to see you. When we don't see you here, we kind of worry about you, you know? We do have candles lit for you and your family. We do, all over, even in Central City East. Wednesday, I did not have an opportunity to speak before you during the issue of the ACLU decision, because somebody told me that it was Special Item 1 and not Special Item 2. And right now, I'm trying to deliberate whether it was done on purpose so that a member of the Skid Row community could not speak on an issue that was very important to me and myself. I'm very ashamed of what this person did. Hello, you there? I'm very ashamed, very ashamed that Mr. Eric Garcetti also did not recognize anybody from Skid Row to speak on this subject matter. What you did Wednesday has no credibility. It has no credibility because it was only the business community and social service providers that get paid, Orlando Ward gets paid $75,000 a year. But there was nobody from the actual community to speak. And the argument is going to be made when that happens, that nobody from there had an opportunity to speak. It was only the business community. And I can already see that this, you're, what you wanted, failing. You have no credibility. I'm ashamed of that aspect of it, but it took moral courage to stand up. I still smell sulfur from where Ramona Ripston and Solbo were sitting. La Diablo, she wants to just throw people in one place to let them die, be forgotten. For me, it's a matter of survival. For many of us there, it's a matter of survival. If you're going to throw people in one place like they did in 1976, in '78, '79, when they made that decision, you're going back in history and you're killing people. So it took, it was great, it was great moral courage what you did. Unfortunately, I'm not sure if you guys are, that is really what's going to happen, or Antonio still has the option of vetoing this thing. So if he vetoes this thing, I already know that I'm just calling your bluff. Vote no, Prop R.
Thank you very much. Next speaker will be Dr. Morris.
Now, what I want to present here, I've been working on since 1973 when I was in high school. And I've been in school all my, all my life. I have two Associate of Arts, three Bachelors, two Masters, and three Doctorates. So what I'm saying is that it's a very profound concept I have developed. Now, greenhouse gases, which is being blamed for the overheat in the world, I don't think is the real reason. I believe that space flights, where they're taking weight from Earth and transferring it outside of our atmosphere, is causing Earth to be lightened. And the lunar and solar influences of gravity is kind of influencing it more, causing the seas to rise and causing the place to be hotter. And so we are responding now by closing on factories that tend to pollute and put much carbon dioxide out there. And I don't think that's the way we need to go. I have also developed something which I call Pollution Resolve, in which we remove the stacks from factories. You filter out the soot and the carbon dioxide, you lower the temperature to about maybe minus 200 and becomes dry ice. So we don't have to be polluting the atmosphere. And I trust that I've been successful in having this released in London as a press release, and hopefully, we could take it up and start discussing it. But we don't have to transport our businesses to other parts of the world where their environmental standards might be slacker, because we could handle it. We could deal with it. We don't have to pollute the atmosphere as being done in the past. And so instead of penalizing the economy, we could look at this new way of doing it, take out this soot, lower the temperatures, and we have the, it's right there, and we don't have to pollute the, the environment. Thank you very much.
Next speaker will be Mr. Zuma Dog.
Yes, thank you. I just had to wait three hours for this two minutes, but it's very important, because on Wednesday was the biggest day at City Hall in the six months I've been here. It's the first time I saw TV cameras from all the different news stations here. Unfortunately, there was a motorcycle chase and a complete news blackout that day from 10 o'clock to 11 o'clock news. What happened was city council could not appear as though they were going to have an anything goes policy between 9:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. here in this city. It would just look bad. So, you know, I understand that. And they did not accept the ACLU agreement. Chief Bratton was disappointed, because he was at least excited to get in there between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. to break down these tent cities. If you're not allowed to do enforcement at all, right now, there's a court order preventing the police from doing anything, and they're not allowed to break up the tent cities. However, if they're allowed to do it once a day, then they'll be able to get in there and see what else is being done. I'd like to say, I spoke with LAPD who enforces these tent cities. This is not about people trying to get a good night's sleep because there's no room at the Motel 6, okay? This is all about drug tents. Mr. Rosendahl, it's not about a good night's sleep on the sidewalk. It's about drug tents that the LAPD cannot get in and do anything about. What's going to happen is Tuesday, as we speak, the city attorney is going over the court order and seeing what LAPD can and cannot do regarding the situation. And that report will be Tuesday. And I'd like to say, on behalf of the districts affected at Skid Row, Jan Perry's district, we need to have stop, where people are not allowed to be illegal dumping. You got taxis, you got social services, you got people from all across the region. Okay, so LAPD is going to start to be able to do something and get a wedge in there. But I'd like to say, we need to do, LAPD has cameras throughout Skid Row, and they're taking notice of the taxis, social services from all across the region, because at least Skid Row's being contained right now. If you kick this thing too hard, they're going to start going to other areas, and they're going to be in your neighborhood. So please stop illegal dumping at Skid Row and let the police take care of the people that are there that should be. And this is about humanity. And remember, nobody should be living under these conditions.
All right, our next speaker will be Mr. Carl Olson. Carl Olson.
Madam President, members of the city council, I've brought some copies of my prepared statement. I'd like to have them distributed to the members if I could. My name is Carl Olson. I'm the chairman of the organization State Department Watch. Publicly elected bodies must be on the forefront of the rule of law. Anything else becomes a bad example for the public, children, and the employees of the city, the 45,000 employees. All employers, including government bodies, need to verify the eligibility of employees to work in this country. There's the constant threat from the 10 to 20 million illegal aliens who could be hired with use of fraudulent documents. Not only are the taxpayers injured, but the other employees and prospective employment candidates will be unfairly harmed by this ultimate resume padding. The threat is real. The Department of Water and Power found five illegals on its payroll for more than three years in positions ranging from management analyst to water sampling technician. They came from Ethiopia, Nigeria, El Salvador, Mexico, and the Philippines. And in your packet is a copy of the article out of the Daily News on that. All employers are eligible to use the free, simple federal online basic pilot program to verify eligibility of persons to work in this country. And your packet's got some of the webpage on that in there. Our organization will post the names of public bodies which enroll in the basic pilot program and those which refuse such requests on our website, which is www.statedepartmentwatch.org. The issue of illegal aliens has become a top priority in the electorate's mind in the city of Herndon, Virginia. Virtually all the city council was defeated for reelection in May because they maintained a hiring site for illegal aliens. There's an L.A. Times article in your packet on that, too. You're hereby requested to enroll in the basic pilot program and let us know your decision as soon as possible. The rule of law must be the cornerstone of your ongoing incumbency. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker will be Mr. Michael Hunt.
Good morning, city council. What I seen here on Wednesday with the homeless initiative was a whole bunch of red tape again. I think that we need to move it forward, get it out of litigation, and get people in housing, and take all the money and make it work for the people instead of litigation in the court systems and things like that. That's so sad, when we have homeless people and not enough buildings and not, not enough to eat, things like that. Let's address the mental health issue with the monies that are available out there and put people back to work. Those are the three most important things in the Los Angeles City, working, jobs, and housing. I think that's a lack of, and I think that all of you guys need to start participating in it as well, and get it out of court and litigation. My last thing that I really want to hit on, we need to provide the jobs for the people and bring any job is a good job in any community. I'm addressing this to the Venice boardwalk issue too as well. We need to get those folks back to work. We need to start making housing. We need to start making transitional housing and just get out of Jan Perry's area and put it in everybody's area so that we're all responsible for it. Each and every individual in here who's making over $100,000 need to participate in helping the homeless in transitional housing. Michael Hunt, I have five houses opening in October.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker will be Mr. Matthew Dowd.
Thank you very much. Looking forward, in the city of Los Angeles, we like doing that. We've got elections coming up next year in March. And funnily enough, it works out that all the odd-number council districts are termed out, except for Bill Rosendahl, who's responsible for bringing me in here, because I'm in his district. But I think he's on the right track now. And all the even-number council districts, they're all safe from being termed out, but a number of them will be incumbents next year. So I'm suggesting, if you want to be reelected, get behind Tom LaBange, because I think he's going to walk through, because he's Mr. Los Angeles. He's got the experience. He's worked with Tom Bradley, John Ferraro. He knows everyone. He's got all the contacts. He, he's going to be the next mayor if we're really looking forward, because I hear on the street that the current one is going to be finished. So Jose Uiza, I saw the dumbstruck look on your face the other day when you saw that latest piece of unethical, unethical work, the Jan Perry litigation. So get with Bill Rosendahl, all the even numbers, in fact, because yous are all going to have a shot. But you've got to stop fighting these things that are unconstitutional. If you didn't know what you voted on back then, let me tell you about the Venice one as well. Your city attorney just told me that commercial goods can be handed out on the boardwalk. We can demonstrate them. We can proselytize the benefits. It also says here, and a judgment against the city of Los Angeles, that you can't draw lines on the boardwalk. And it also says down here, and Harry Perry and Tom LaBange, you were responsible for this. You, you brought the motion about, well, anyway, let me distribute that.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker will be Ms. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Sylvia Lynn Hawkins. As we continue to help all races, amens, and womens, and giving them the answer and how to be cured from HIV or AIDS or any sick disease, we all must continue to not use any kind of milk, orange juice, or regular sugar, but use only Ecrill or Splenda, no cows or pigs, or condoms, because you all are healed. Using ice cream of any-- Using ice cream of any kind is not the way to go. If you are suffering from any kind of AIDS or cow madness disease, using milk is not the answer, whether it is cow milk, whether it is organic milk. The answer is no milk will heal you of AIDS. Thank you very much. My name is Ms. Sylvia Hawkins.
Thank you very much. The next speaker will be a Mr. or Ms., last name is spelled S.A.C.H.S.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Arnold Sax, and I just wanted to comment on today's discussion on item number 52. I believe Councilman Reyes asked questions regarding certain funds for a river, river, the cleaning up of the river, the LA River. And Mr. Gold, the respondent, replied that the funds could only be, Mr. Reyes asked about using funds for educational purposes, and Mr. Gold replied that the funds could not be used for educational purposes, but could only be used for structural purposes. And he got this information because the ruling was issued by the city attorney. Now the city attorney has issued an opinion that the language for the third term initiative that the city council looks to put on the ballot has been, is not, is illegal. And the city council has decided to hire outside attorneys to fight that ruling. I'm wondering why none of the city council members have decided or requested to hire outside councils to fight the city attorney's ruling on applying funds for educational purposes to help clean up the LA River. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker will be Mr. Alberto Tlatoa.
Good morning, city councilmembers. It's nice to be, nice to be back. My name is Alberto Tlatoa. I'm a South Central farmer and you know what? Things are still the same in South Central. There's still a lack of, you know, fresh produce. That's a lack in our community, a lack of green environments in our community, a lack of positive environments that are really fundamental and that the farm represented that. So I'm just happy and excited and looking forward to probably sitting down with some of you guys to talk about this issue because this is a fundamental issue that affects all of the districts and especially the low-income districts. And you know what? Now that everything went down, we're now more determined to continue with our struggle to improve our communities because what was done was not fair, and you guys know it. And now this issue, we will continue to push for this issue until this, this matter is solved because we're not going anywhere. We will continue to come to City Hall as long as it takes. If it takes coming for another three years, then we will do it because we are very determined members of our community and looking forward to improving every aspect of it. And you know, issues, this issue is very important and it's, it's a root to a lot of the problems, gang violence, you know? We need positive environments so, you know, our kids could grow up to be positive members of society and be not drawn into the negative sites. And you know, the plants in South Central and the South Central farm are still growing, so that shows you that, you know, there's still hope because plants are continuing to grow there. And you cannot never bulldoze our spirits because we are now more determined than ever. And we'll continue to improve our communities. We will having, we will be having our first farmer market on October the 2nd, right there on MLK. So inviting you guys and if you guys want more information on our organization, visit our website, www.southcentralfarmers.com, because we're still moving forward with everything and we will not continue until justice is proclaimed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker will be Mr. Candido Maras.
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate the time. Candido Maras residing at 6179 Bally's Boulevard, formerly at 111 North Hope Street, but more importantly, for 20 years was honored to live in the great district, 12th district, served by the great Greg Smith. What I have here, folks, November, we have a big election coming up and a lot of you will end up with these kinda things. I won't show you what they are, but you all know what they are, campaign posters. I'd like to give my number, 818-259-3060. When the elections are over, please call me. Anybody in your districts, if you're hearing, call us and we'll come and pick these up. Now you're probably wondering what's gonna happen with this. We all heard of clean money. We're talking about recycled money. We're gonna take these and reuse them in March. So please, if they're out there, give us a holler, we'll pick them up, 818-259-3060. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker will be Lisa Martelaro Palmer. She left? Okay, all right. Final card is from Mr. Michael Pell.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to close the public comment on a positive note. And since today is the day before New Year's, wanna wish the council, all my fellow city employees, the thousands in attendance and the millions watching on Channel 35, a very good and sweet New Year in all things, both materially and spiritually.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pell. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item, Madam Presidents, item number eight, excuse me, number 12, and that was called special by Councilmember Parks, and there is an amending motion that has been distributed. Mr. Parks, item number 12.
12. Thank you, Madam Chair. We just have an amending motion that's been circulated to just give some direction to the city attorney. Did not, the direction did not get on the report, and so that's all we're adding.
Thank you. That item is now before us with the amendments. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
We ask that item go forthwith, please. Thank you. Next item.
Item number 27, call special for cards from the public, and there is a substitute motion that has been distributed.
Thank you. Two public speaker cards, Zuma Dog and Mr. Hunt.
First of all, what were you referring to about some verbiage change with something with this? Because I don't wanna be speaking on something if you changed it.
There was an amending motion that was distributed.
Wait, it's all, first of all, the clock's only at 50 seconds. I thought you get two minutes.
It was starting at one minute for these items. Madam Clerk, if you can put them back to one minute, would you like to hold your comments until, just so you just mentioned?
Well, I'll just comment as it is here on the agenda then. It says right here, this is declaring Nike special event. This is one of those special event fee waivers, you know, where it's supposed to be going to non-commercial events. What could be more commercial than Nike? They've been accused of using sweatshops, you know, to make their products, you know, taking jobs out of America to make the product cheaper. Then they charge so much in the community. There's no company that's more of a corporate machine that charges a lot of money for their products. I can't think of anything more commercial than Nike, and so I don't see why we're taking city money for a Nike event. Let them pay for it. You know, why promote Nike? I don't understand it. Maybe Jack Weiss could weigh in on this to see if this fits the criteria. I know this has been a problem since the year 2002. I've been speaking about it, special event fee waivers for non-commercial, open-to-the-public events. Why spend city money to give the most corporate machine Nike free advertising? I say let them pay for the damn event. Zuma Dog.
Thank you. Mr. Hunt. The other was Mr. Hunt? Name says Mr. Hunt on item number 27. We're in item number 27. There was no card from you, Mr. Dowd.
Can you yield it to me then?
No, you need to fill out.
I put in a card, I put one in, it's gotta be up there. It's called Deep South.
Okay, we would appreciate if you would submit the card before the item is considered.
Okay, can I, okay, clock's on. All right, yeah, this is a, this is a great little item for $20,000 only. I am the spokesman now for Nike, and I'm gonna give them $20,000 worth on Channel 35. You can see it at the bottom of the screen here, folks. It's declaring the Nike Run Hit Wonder on September 24, a special event. Declare the Nike, let's say it again, sponsored by Nike on September 24, a special event. Let's waive all the fees and the costs, except the insurance, we can't be paying for that. But there they are, N-I-K-E, Nike, Tiger Woods, you go. Thank you.
Thank you. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
Next item?
Item number 30.
That item will go forthwith, thank you.
Item number 30, call special for cards from the public.
Mr. Michael Hunt.
Yes, this is the Abbott Kinney Festival. I'm gonna vote yes on this one, and I want everybody else to, $9,105. I'm hope I'm able to get that much money for my bedding for my homeless shelter as well. Hey, Mr. Rosendahl, can you put, put my bedding on, on the agenda too for my homeless shelters, $9,105? Yeah, no, no, listen, I don't know if you guys read the new rules for decorum, but you can address the city council members and it's at the city attorney's office. The new rules say you can address any of the members. I got that clear from the city attorney's office. I was over there too as well. But anyways, here's the thing is, I'm for every festival. I just wanna get that much money for the homeless people as well. Thank you, Mr. Hunt.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. City Attorney?
For the record, Rule 12 states no question may be asked of a member of the council or the city staff without permission of the presiding officer. That was deleted. However, the members of the public must address the council as a whole when they're speaking.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, this item is now before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
There's no additional cards, I have no additional cards here. There are cards for additional items, but there is not one for this item.
Item number 35.
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't have it here. Item 35.
It was called special for cards from the public.
Mr. Michael Hunt on item number 35.
Because the cards are only used for the names, we use different names on each items of the card, and they're calling out our original name versus our, the names that we put on a card for, for the orderly conduct of the meeting, and this is what the city attorney said.
I will ask Mr. City Attorney. Mr. City Attorney, the card I received here has Michael Hunt's name on it. Prior to that, it has Deep South 81. Someone cross that out and put Michael Hunt.
Right. Who crossed that out? Because I'm Deep South 81. You can find me on YouTube, that's my name.
Right. But for the orderly conduct. Mr. City Attorney, excuse me, sir. Mr. City Attorney?
That's me.
Please, please.
If, if the council president or President Protam knows the name of the speaker, that person can be called to, to the podium.
Okay. Excuse me a second. It did, again, I just came up to the, to the seat here and it said, it said your name. Deep South 81, please. Deep South 81.
All right, well, at least we established Deep South 81 as the official name that I'm going under on YouTube.com. Now, back to the Abbott Kinney Festival, it's a special event. Great, this isn't a bad one. I just wanna tell the people who Abbott Kinney was. He moved into the Venice area in 1925, and he established the canals and the whole area when nobody wanted it. And he's the guy who established Venice as the indisputable forum for public expression. It's not the streets of Waikiki, it's not the streets of New York. It's a recognized forum for public expression. Abbott Kinney was responsible for that, but once again, here's Tom LeBonge doing something good. He's showing how he knows the history of this city. It's a little expensive, but hey, it's in Council District 11, and bill's safe.
Thank you. Actually, that is, and Mr. Reyes says, I think it is, an item number 35. Madam Clerk, open the roll on this item, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
Next item.
Item number 40, call special for cards from the public.
Yes. King Weston and Zuma Dog.
Thank you for the orderly conduct of the meeting, and we're talking about this as special event right here, Mr. King Weston right here. And I too support this bill, so vote yes on it. Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Grill, for getting it right.
Yes, Mr. Zuma Dog.
Yes, this looks good to me, but I would like to have a little clarification for the public. Let me first read what the item is. It's relative to declaring the deployment of 50 additional footbeat officers at the LAPD central area on September 17 through December 31, a special event. I mean, it sounds good, man. Anytime you're gonna put 50 additional cops out there, it says only 1,000 bucks, but can someone please explain the rest of my time? What is this for? What's a special, what is this? Can that be asked? Can somebody ask just simply what it's for? It sounds good, but what, you know, what's September 17 through December 31st, 50 extra cops?
This is a special event declaring the deployment of that, the special fence that are just the fees and costs absorbed by it. It is not, from looking at this, is not for the additional 50 officers. Okay.
If somebody could please kind of explain.
I'll be more than happy to have someone from Ms. Perry's office, and this is in her district, to explain to.
But it'd be good to go out on TV so people could know.
Thank you. Someone from Ms. Perry's office could explain the event to Mr. Zuma Dog. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
That item has been approved. Next item?
Item number 42, call special for cards from the public.
Yes, Deep South 81, please. Excuse me, 42.
Okay, this is a motion Perry-LeBonge. I don't like that combination, and I don't think Mr. LeBonge, honestly, I'm serious, you're the kinda guy who needs to be running this city. You speak well, sounds good, don't be associated with things that can possibly cause trouble later on down the line. And I'm talking about March next year. I want you to be reelected. Here's something, making an exception for more people. See, this is finding that the class of 2007 graduation ceremony, Los Angeles Trade Technical College, serves a public purpose in that it will allow 800 students to graduate and have their parents and friends. I'm not one of them, so how's it serve the public? That's serving them.
Thank you.
Look into that, please.
That's our only speaker on that item. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
That item has been approved. Next item?
Item 44, called special by Mr. Zine, and there is also a card on this item.
Mr. Zine, would you like to, we hear from the two speakers first and then we'll go to you. That's all right. Thank you. Mr. Zuma Dog, followed by Mr. Hunt.
Yes, I do represent for hip-hop, as everybody knows, and this is very important to everybody in the community of hip-hop, not to make light of the situation. I'd just like it to be known because sometimes people don't quite pay attention when the council members speak because sometimes it's boring. $50,000 reward reinstated for the reward in the death of Christopher Wallace, AKA Notorious B.I.G. They want to extend the $50,000 reward for the additional 60 days. So if you have any information regarding the death of Christopher Wallace, AKA Notorious B.I.G., please contact LAPD. I would like it to be said, though, this is slightly confusing because I thought we already had the, I thought we already had it concluded and that there was some fine detective work on this and that the person responsible was already in jail for another crime. So, but I guess maybe we need some more information regarding that. So call LAPD, 50,000. Rest in peace, Christopher Wallace, Notorious B.I.G. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt.
All right, thank you. This is for Christopher Wallace. Let me tell you, I used to work in the music industry. The guy who killed Christopher Wallace is dead himself, so you guys can actually take that off the agenda because you guys won't find him, thanks to LAPD. At that time, Biggie got shot by an LAPD officer, and that officer is now dead as well. So you guys are beating a dead horse. Take the money and do something good with it, like give it to the homeless shelters. I know that for a fact. You guys will not find Biggie Smalls' killer because he's gone himself.
Thank you. Deep South 81.
Thank you. Deep South 81 from YouTube.com. I wanna talk about these rewards. I don't know anything except what I hear on the street about this whole case, but I wanna talk about these $50,000. See, you can only claim that money if, if you release your identity to the authorities. I've seen it. I've seen it on Channel Thirty-Five, it says they will not pay it if you give anonymous information. So what I'd be looking for is to have some kind of unofficial, like a one thousand dollar reward, and have a liaison officer who can take the information, cause the people who are gonna give you this information, they don't want their identity revealed, because we know Bratton will throw them through the cleaners, so no one's coming forward, so you need an unofficial one. People need money out here on the street, and I know that people will come up with information, five hundred dollars, thousand dollars, give their name as Princess Zine or whatever, and come and collect the money.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the item is, excuse me, I'm sorry, Mr. Zine, I apologize, Mr. Zine.
Thank you, I didn't know that Princess Zine was speaking also, thank you. The reason why we're bringing this back is that the police department's opened this investigation, there's been allegations of improprieties within the police department, and to keep this continuing investigation alive, and hopefully bring someone forward. I'd also like to mention that there is a witness protection program that is available if someone's concerned about their safety, but we're looking at information leading to the arrest and conviction of the individual individuals involved in this murder, and the reason why we're issuing this continuation of this fifty thousand dollar is to keep this matter alive. Hopefully, a witness will come forward, and the matter will be solved, and justice will be served. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
Next item?
Next item is item forty-five, and that was called special by Councilmember Parks.
Did you say forty-eight? We had a card on forty-eight.
I'm sorry, forty-five, called special by Councilmember Parks.
Councilmember Parks.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, I just would like to ask for the public's support in helping us solve a double homicide in Seventy-Seven Division. Many of you remember that we had the family here back in two thousand and four, this incident happened Monday, May twenty-fourth, two thousand and four, at eleven fifty-five P.M. Two individuals, Brian Butler, twenty-five, and Melvin Knowles, also twenty-five, were fatally wounded at seventy-eight hundred block of Ninth Avenue, when unknown suspects opened fire on them with an assault weapon and a handgun. What also brings this to mind is that Brian Butler was actually on active duty with the United States Navy at the time, when he was murdered, and he'd just finished serving his tour of duty in Iraq, and was waiting for his next deployment, which would have been a, less than two weeks later. Neither he nor Melvin had been involved in any gang or criminal activity, and we would just ask the public in support of the family and the city to come forward, there's a reward for seventy-five thousand dollars. Detective Joseph Chavez at Seventy-Seven, and his callback number is two-one-three-four-eight-five-one-three-eight-three.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
That item has been approved. Next item?
Item forty-eight, called special for Carson the Public.
Yes, King Weston, please.
I don't think this is me, and if it is, let me bypass it. That should be Matt Dow.
Thank you very much, it's good to be back on the right card, I hope. This one is just about the city attorney, facilitate payments in the settlement agreement. Settlements by the city attorney, I just wanna draw your attention to the Los Angeles Times today, if you look in the California section, you can find information about why we need to look into these settlements, and also why the police haven't investigated properly. I know those things are going back to the Inspector General, Andre, you gotta have a look at these, because the city's paying out a lot of money, but no police seem to be getting in any trouble, but they're the ones costing us the money.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, this item is now before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
Next item, please.
Item fifty, call special for cards from the public.
Deep South Eighty-One, please.
Last one in the merry-go-round of city council. This is another one of these resolutions I talked about already a couple of days ago, declaring September fifteenth as Azteca America Day in the city of Los Angeles now. You can probably correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's a commercial entity, you know, that's not a nonprofit, I mean, they may do good work, and so do many companies, commercial entities around the world, but, you know, I think we've gone too far when we're starting to declare a commercial company to have their special day, I mean, I think we should make today Nike Day. Well, when's Nike Day coming up? If we're gonna start, let's, how about Deep South Eighty-One Day await? That is today. Thank-
Thank you, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on that item, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you, and if we could ask item number ten to go forth with, please? Any other items on the regular agenda?
No, Madam President, just the item that was on the special agenda, special meeting one.
Okay, thank you. I know, Ms. Hunt, you wish to speak on this item, we also have Youssef Robb here from, yes, on eighty-seven as well.
Why don't we let the members of the, who've been sitting here for a long time, speak first, and then I'll say something.
Thank you. Youssef, and we do have one minute for your presentation.
No problem, I'm gonna make it very quickly. Thank you very much for this opportunity to nutshell Proposition Eighty-Seven, it's gonna bring cleaner air and cheaper energy to California, it's gonna reduce our state's use of gasoline and diesel by twenty-five percent over ten years, it's an immediate and practical solution for the state with the highest gas prices and the worst air quality. I wanna specifically address real quick benefits to cities, fleet vehicles, general services, fleets, DWP, sanitation, all those big trucks the city has, we can help swap them out, they'll use less gas, they'll save money and emit less pollution, AMP program, Ms. Hunt, this could be used for that. I know there were some questions about accountability, I'm gonna roll through those real fast, all existing state laws, and in fact, tougher regulations enacted by Prop Eighty-Seven, audits by independent CPAs, audits by the State Controller's Office, an independent financial oversight committee, open meetings, all money dispersed in a competitive bidding fashion, Bagley Keen Open Meeting Act, Political Reform Act, Brown Act, you name it, there is a lot of bureaucracy in this, when it comes to mining the store and making sure the money is spent appropriately. Thank you.
Wow, there you go. Thank you. Ms. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, I'm asking us today to take a position in support of Proposition Eighty-Seven, which will collect four billion dollars through a petroleum extraction fee, very similar to what Louisiana, Alaska, and even Texas have to pay, only it's even lower than that. And this money will be used to reduce our dependency on oil, and provide incentives for research and production of alternative energy, energy-efficient vehicles and technologies. This means hybrid, hydrogen cars, solar cells. You know, it's amazing to me that the average car today is no more fuel efficient than cars were twenty years ago, which, given today's technology, should be an embarrassment to all of us. Half of the money from Proposition Eighty-Seven will go towards raising fuel efficiency, and this proposition prohibits gas companies from passing along the cost to the consumers, and the Attorney General's Office will be expected to enforce that. And given the record profits that these oil companies have enjoyed in recent years, they can afford to absorb this fee as part of their cost of doing business here. I believe that this proposition will help save lives through reduced emission of CO2 and other toxins to the environment, meaning less pollution for us all, and I wanna speak again to the oversight piece of this, cause I think this is important for people in California to know. It's not gonna create a new bureaucracy, it's gonna reinvigorate an existing state agency, and this oversight committee will consist of environmental, energy, business, and public health experts, and there will be tough accountability standards. They will have mandatory audits by an independent CPA firm, they will be audited by the State Controller's Office, there will be a limit on what they spend on administrative expenses, and they will have open meetings, they will issue public reports, and they will have public hearings. Just yesterday, President, former President Clinton endorsed Proposition Eighty-Seven at his global initiative conference, and this is what he said. This is a very, very good thing to do, and since California is our biggest state, it pumps one hundred and ninety million tons of pollution into the air from cars, trucks, and buses that run on gasoline and diesel every year. This is a big deal, and I'm grateful to California for putting this forward. I think this is the right thing for us to do, it's about time, and I think Los Angeles, who has always had severe pollution issues, particularly in and around the harbor area, this is the right thing for us to do, and I urge your unanimous support so we can send a message. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Hunt, that item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes. One no.
Ten ayes and one no. And, Madam Clerk, could we also, we ask that to go forth with, as well as item number forty-eight to go forth with. Madam Clerk, next item?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those will be posted and referred?
Their excuses on the desk, Council President Garcetti requests to be excused Wednesday, October twenty-fifth, to leave at eleven-thirty for city business, that meets council policy.
He will be excused.
Councilmember Smith requests to be excused September twenty-seventh, to leave at eleven-thirty, and October third, to arrive at eleven for city business, those meet council policy.
Be excused.
Councilmember Weiss requests to be excused October tenth, eleventh, and thirteenth, a motion is required on the thirteenth.
Mr. Reyes moves, Ms. Perry seconds.
And a correction on a request from Councilmember Padilla, he requests to be excused the entire meeting on November first for personal business, and that meets council policy.
He will be excused.
And that clears the desk, Madam President.
Thank you. Do we have any announcements today? Any announcements? Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I would just like to, several items in the Eighth District and surrounding area, just to remind everybody that we have the Eighteenth Annual L.A. Black Business Expo, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday at the Convention Center, eleven A.M. to nine. Also, the Major League Baseball Groundkeeping Field Day is Saturday, the twenty-third, at their Major League Academy, it's nine oh one east Artesia, and also the Semiannual Beautification Project, put on by the Crenshaw Christian Center, is Saturday at eight through twelve o'clock at their main campus, and then the African-American and Latino Summit, along with your Baca, is Saturday, September twenty-third, at the USC Town and Gown at eight A.M. in the morning, and then finally, the Water and Power African-American Association will be having their annual Young African-American Males Conference, Saturday, September twenty-third, eight to four P.M. at the Pasadena City College.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Yes, Mr. Le Bonj?
Thank you, thank you for the compliment, Mr. Rosenthal, on my tie, just to remind you, at nine-twelve, this evening, fall comes in, and the fall season comes in, and let's not all, remember that the toughest, that explains my tie, the falling leaves, but the toughest fire season now starts now through November, our worst fires in our history is in November, October, November. And to recap this morning with the emergency preparedness, thank Ellis Stanley for bringing all those folks, we all should get community emergency response teams organized, this is the month to do it, and I wanna thank everyone for their involvement in that. Finally, I wanted to remind you is that we're concluding this afternoon, the first annual Los Angeles Sister City Trade Festival, where we had over a hundred participants from sister cities from around the world and Southern California, it's held at the USC School, Marshall Business School, in conjunction with the University of Southern California, and then this Sunday, we'll cap it off with the Second Annual Sister City Festival, which will be music from all our sister cities from twelve to seven, and the mayor will be joining us at four in the afternoon out at the Grove at Third and Fairfax, so you're all welcome to come this Sunday for the Sister City Festival, Second Annual. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Did you wanna comment on that one particular, okay, Mr. Reyes, then, Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you, Madam President, I just wanna invite everyone to the L.A. State Historic Park grand opening this Saturday at nine-thirty A.M. I believe it's a historic moment, we have a former rail yard, been there for decades, an industrial wasteland, and now we have a grand park where you can view our skyline, our city hall, just like all the major cities, we're gonna have a lot of entertainment, the ceremonies begin at nine-thirty A.M., we'll have ketsal, the historic sonic fireworks, the taiko drummers, Afro-Cuban drummers, shaolin monks, mariachi divas, the Eastwood Lion Dance troupe, and much more. So thanks to all the committee members that fought hard, I wanna thank the state for their participation and support, and the mayor for joining us, and essentially, big celebration, big moment for the city of L.A. And one more is we'll have, on that same day, Saturday, at Lincoln Park, youth fishing derby will be filling our, what used to be called East Lake, one of the original boundaries of the city, Lincoln Park, it's free for youngsters fifteen and younger, we'll have with us the Wreckin Parks, California Department of Fishing Games, we'll have fishing rods, all the equipment, and the young people and folks in the inner city can actually enjoy fishing in the inner city, so welcome all.
Well, and thank you, Ed, for your leadership, that would not be happening at Park without you taking a strong stand on that, congratulations. Mr. Rosenthal?
Just to add to your joy this weekend, folks, when you finish with Tom's sister city thing, come on over to Venice, we have what we call the Abbott-Kenny Street Festival. Abbott-Kenny founded Venice, and on that boulevard, we have an event every year at this time, there'll be thousands of people, thousands of, you know, fun things, go to the beach, and then come to the Abbott-Kenny Festival in Venice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Mr. Zine?
Ashanatolov to our Jewish viewers, and also, we have, something about the diversity of Los Angeles, we have the Korean Parade this Saturday, Thirty-Third Annual Korean Parade, Olympic Boulevard between Vermont and Western Avenue, Our Lady of the Valley Catholic Church is having the festival, at Setonoga and Topanga at five-thirty, and Saint Mel's at Ventura, and De Soto's having a festival. So we've got many groups, the diversity of L.A. is coming together this weekend, and also on Sunday, it's the Seventeen Annual Public Safety Mass for public safety personnel at the Cathedral, and that mass is ten A.M. at the Cathedral, Our Lady of the Angels, so a lot of activities, a lot of diversity, a lot of celebrations this weekend.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine. I wanna, on behalf of Mr. Garcetti, announcement that yesterday in Los Angeles, we celebrated the U.N. International Day of Peace, the mayor rang a world peace bell five times at noon at a ceremony that commemorated the fifth anniversary of the nine-eleven terrorist attacks, and members of the consulate corps were present along with local NGO leaders. There were over twenty world peace bells in fifteen countries at the United, and at the United Nations. Twelve of the fifteen countries have consulates in Los Angeles. The world peace bell became a symbol of global peace, and has been used to initiate the U.N. Peace Ceremony held on the first day of the U.N. General Assembly opens. All U.N. ambassadors attend the ceremony, led by U.N. Secretary General Kofi Annan, who rings the bell and delivers a message of peace for the coming year. Do we have any adjourn, yes, before, Mr. Cognis?
I just wanted to remind everybody that the Death Festival is not tomorrow, this is Death Awareness Month, but it is next Saturday, the thirtieth, so you're welcome to come to the park in Van Nuys and enjoy yourself, but the festival is actually next Saturday, not tomorrow, cause some people assumed that it was tomorrow, because we had all the festivities today. So it's next Saturday, a week from tomorrow, on the thirtieth of September, and also, council members and staff, there's a bunch of cake back there, and some goodies that we had for the Death Festival here, so before you go to the office, please take some up. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any adjourned motions? Yes, if we could ask everyone to please rise, I'm sorry, excuse me, Mr. Rosenthal, before we have adjourned motions.
I wish everybody Happy New Year. Rosh Hashanah starts tonight, the beginning of the high holidays of the Jewish community, with Yan Kippur coming in, and it is the year coming up of fifty-seven, sixty-seven will be the year when Rosh Hashanah and sundown come, so Happy New Year to all folks who are participating in it. Jewish folks and non-Jewish alike should celebrate the new Jewish New Year. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosenthal. Ms. Hunt?
Thank you. Members, I'd like us to adjourn today in the memory of Mary Moran, who passed away last Saturday. Mary was an active labor leader, starting her labor career in nineteen forty when she joined the Waitress Union, Local Five Twelve. She remained active on the board, serving as vice presidents and secretary treasurer until she retired in nineteen seventy-seven. During World War Two, Mary represented the harbor area as a member of- During World War II, Mary represented the harbor area as a member of the Board of the War Manpower Commission. She also served four years on the Central Labor Council as president. In her retirement, she served 14 terms as president of the Wilmington Social Senior Club. I just saw Mary a few weeks ago, when we finally opened, uh, the East Wilmington Recreation Center, a long-awaited gym for kids that live on Wilmington's east side. She is survived by three of her sisters, five brothers, as well as numerous nieces and nephews, as well as a stepdaughter and two step-grandchildren. Her funeral mass will be held tomorrow at 10:30 at Mary Star of the Sea Catholic Church in San Pedro. And I have, uh, another one, I'd like us to adjourn in the memory of Arthur Joseph Arien, who passed away September 19th at the age of 65. He was a 35-year resident of San Pedro. Arthur is survived by his father, by his brother, Dave Arien, who is a good friend of mine and a labor leader in the harbor area. He is also survived by his sister, Lorraine, and his nieces and nephew.
Thank you, Ms. Han. Yes, Mr. LaBonge?
Thank you. I ask we adjourn in memory of Frank Zuchelter, the great Toluca Lake resident, lived well into his 80s, was a wonderful man, involved with his homeowners association, was really the leader of that. He's, we sorely missed. His funeral is tomorrow at 10:00 AM at St. Charles Church in North Hollywood. Frank Zuchelter, may rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. LaBonge. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I'd ask that we, and also ask Mrs. Perry to join with me on a, uh, adjournment motion in honor of Reverend Oliver Brown II. He's a native of San Antonio, Texas. He passed away September the 14th, due to complications in cancer. He's a graduate of Prairie View A&amp;M. Uh, he completed his ministerial training, uh, in Atlanta, Georgia. Uh, he pastored congregations in Georgia, Illinois, New Jersey, and California. Most recently, he's the founding pastor of the First African Presbyterian Church that he started in February 2001, and, uh, in LeMert Park, and later moved to a South Crenshaw address. He leaves a host of family members. His funeral was yesterday.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Ms. Perry?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I would like to adjourn today in the memory of David Pribe, the father of Holly Pribe Diaz, who passed last Friday, days before his 69th birthday. David Pribe was a Spanish American, I'm sorry, was a German-American who learned to speak Spanish, so he could court his Spanish-speaking love of his life, Holly's mother. He and his wife raised their children in the Normandy and Florence area. Her father was also a published haikuist. He wrote haiku, poetry. He was an amazing man, who devoted his life to his children and family, with a wonderful sense of humor and a love for life that will never be forgotten, and I know that we all join the family in mourning his loss.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Any other adjournings motions? Yes, Mr. Wesson?
Uh, thank you, uh, Madam President and members. Today, I rise and adjourn in the memory of Harold George Payet, who passed away September 20th. He was 73 years old, uh, the father of Lisa Payet Coleman, who works for me and who's been a longtime city employee. And, uh, the family asked me to say, instead of flowers, if people could give donations to the Alzheimer Association at 323-938-3379. And I have one other adjournment motion. It's a, just a shock. Uh, one of the senior lead officer, senior lead officers in, in the district that I represent passed away on the 22nd. He was only 49 years old. He had a mass, massive stroke. His name is Nathan Warthon, and I would, uh, ask that, that all members, uh, be on that. He's survived by his sister Nina and adult, uh, children, his daughter Latanya, and his son Nathan III.
Ms. Perry?
Mr. Wesson, if it would be okay if I seconded the one for Lisa's father?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes, thank you.
And there will be, uh, for all members.